All right, welcome everybody. I'll give everyone a few minutes. We just exited executive session as set forth on the agenda. We'll be resuming our open session in a minute. Okay, well, it's 7:03. And then I call resume or resume this meeting, call the open session back into order. We've already made the vote to uh to enter the um.
We just did this two nights ago. And Channel 5 connected through my phone.
Can you please mail?
It may be forced. David, yeah. Thank you. All right, so we're going to resume the open session. I'm going to ask the uh we've already called the order, we've taken the vote to order. I'm asked the town administrator to read the agenda and David, read the part that says open session. If you want to read the six or exact session you can, but it's already been read for the uh it's been read to the public. And then you can certainly read just the rest of the open session as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. First, there's um amend or approve the agenda and then a period of public comment. And there is a 6:30 PM executive session for meeting with Town Council pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A Section 21A 3, 6, and 7 in Suffolk Construction versus DCAM 449 Mass. 444 2007 to obtain legal advice regarding potential exercise of right of first refusal to purchase or assign the right to purchase two parcels of land located at map 11 parcels 3B and C at 31 Hunting Lane Sherburne. And then regular agenda, open session agenda. Item one is consent agenda of payroll warrant minutes. Select Board next meeting dates of April 10th, Saturday Advisory Hearing. And then April 15th and April 29th. And Police Chief Search Committee dates of April 8th and April 22nd. The second item is COVID-19 team update. Item three is consideration of reappointment request of Town Clerk Jackie Morris. The Board of Registars Carol Rubenstein for a term to expire April 1st, 2024. Item four groundwater protection committee update from Brian Moore. Item five, consideration of approval of a general obligation bond Heidi Doyle, Town Treasurer. Item six, 2021 annual town meeting warrant and omnibus budget. Consideration of support authorization for designing construction of Laurel Fields, consideration of support for town buildings and facilities capital items Sean Clean. And then consideration of vote to support budgets under the purview of the select. Item 6B, consideration of opening and closing the 2021 annual town meeting warrant. Consideration of inclusion in the warrant authorization for design and construction of Laurel Fields. Consideration of inclusion in the warrant Upper Charles Rail Trail Access Easements. Consideration of potential acquisition of real estate pursuant to GL Chapter 61B Section 9 located at 31 Hunting Lane. Consideration of changes to the Finance Director Accountant Bylaw. 6C, consideration of voting and signing the 2021 annual town meeting warrant. Item seven, 2021 annual town meeting scheduled for May 15th, 2021. Consideration and vote of ballot questions for annual town election need to be but to the town clerk by April 6th. And discussion before hearings with the advisory board on Saturday, April 10th, 2021. The last item is routine business with select board reports and town administrator report. And then the um board will go into executive session at the conclusion of the open session not to return back to open session. For item, one item to discuss strategy with respect to threat and potential litigation if the chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board in the town. And the chair does so declare to discuss the town library pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A Sections 21A 3 and 7 in Suffolk Construction versus DCAM 449 Mass. 444 2007. And that's the complete agenda.
All right, thank you very much, David. The motion relative to the agenda is just read.
Yeah, I recommended we approve the agenda as just read.
Okay. I think you're uh you're muted, George, for you said.
I have one question. We have the Laurel Fields under both the warrant and omnibus budget and then opening and closing the town warrant. Why do we have them on both?
That's a good question. Is there a different?
One is consideration of support, the other is consideration of inclusion. They could have gotten melded in too.
Didn't we already talk about including it? We didn't.
For Laurel Fields?
Yeah, we've already done that. It's a matter of yeah, now whether we support it or not.
I think we held it, George, until we could open and close the warrant.
Exactly.
The last meeting. We said we were inclined.
I didn't. But I think there was a question of including it, I would, but okay.
Okay. Okay, is there a is there a second relative to the agenda?
Second.
Okay, so all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And I am as well. Okay, under that reading agenda, amend approve agenda. On the public comment, I just simply wanted to to say something quick. Just wanted to thank Sharon McPherson. She's retiring, I believe, is out of it today or tomorrow, but I think it's basically imminent. It is certainly be the last select board meeting for that. It should be a celebration on her part. And just thank her.
Wait, 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 wait. Wait. We lost sound.
Something muted me.
Hit it, everybody.
There you go. The whole thing went up.
Where was I? I was simply thanking Sharon McPherson. She's been here four years. And this is um her last select board meeting. And just wanted to thank her for um doing a diligent job for putting up with us and advisory and taking us uh taking the town through our finances for four strong years. So just thank you very much, Sharon. And just wanted to send that out there. That's all.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much. I just want you to know that it really has been an honor and a privilege to work with the select board and advisory. I wish you all the best and I want you to know that you are definitely in good hands. Deb Suffering is is a very talented young woman and she's been reaching out to me and we've I've been getting her up to speed on the crazy world of municipal finance and things are going to move along well. So thank you so much. I appreciate your kind words.
Thank you again and have fun in retirement, certainly.
Enjoy.
Yes, thank you, Sharon. It's been a pleasure working with you both from advisory and from the select board.
Absolutely. All right, um on to consent agenda. Any motions roll to the consent agenda?
I want to bring something up on the consent agenda with the eight for the Police Chief Search Committee. I got a call from Vicky Relis this afternoon that the questions never went out earlier this week that we sent to candidates and therefore were delayed. Because there was some confusion on who was sending them out. So we probably will not have a meeting next week because the deadline now is not till Friday, the ninth. If we have time to add a section to our meeting on the 15th, maybe we could do that. Or it's going to have to wait till the 22nd. So I think we just need to take off the um the eighth meeting because we're not going to have the questions back in time.
I don't think that's the end of the world. As honestly, we've been making pretty good progress. It's uh especially in the recent month or so. I think that's that process has moved on quite nicely. All right, so let's just simply uh so.
So I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda minus the April 8th meeting.
Very good. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
You're muted, Paul.
I think he said I. I think I red looked that.
Yeah.
Oh, you're muted.
Yeah, you know, he's got thumbs up there. And George?
Hi.
Okay, very good. Uh moving on, agenda number, item number two, COVID-19 update. Who is here to speak on that? I see Zach there.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Darrell and I are both here. And Darrell's actually gonna be doing most of the speaking tonight.
Okay, I just wanted to thank you, Zach. Zach gave me some updates during the other power outages and was very diligent on that as well, both Zach and Sean. So I just want to give a quick little shout out there.
Thank you.
Darrell, you want?
Okay, hi. So um I guess just a a quick summary. We do get, we continue to get lots of little questions about all sorts of events or activities or other issues around town on COVID. So we continue to work on that and to figure out how to apply the state's guidance on on different precautionary measures. Uh so if anyone has any questions about that, certainly let us know, but really people do reach out to us on a regular basis on that. I did want to mention, in case people didn't know, there is the pool testing that's ongoing and within the school system. It's in mostly an opt-in. I think only about 20% maybe of the families opted to have their children participate. However, there are some of the sports teams, it's mandatory if the kids are participating in particular sports. The rates continue to be low within the schools and still no evidence of spread within the schools from, you know, like cluster type spreads. Certainly cases associated with sports though. And often those are sports outside of the school programs. So and I will also mention that since the last several holidays, Thanksgiving, Christmas time, holiday, um school vacation week, and we've got another school vacation week coming up. And right now, things are heading not in the direction we thought what we would be seeing now after the vaccination started rolling out. So there could be a number of factors for that, but the experts in this area are very concerned about what is going on and why the numbers are going up so much. So on behalf of the schools, I'd just like to mention, please, if people are, you know, think about what you're doing over the the next school vacation week and what that might mean potentially for the schools and for continued in-person learning. So that's uh again, some of the reminders for people who have had the vaccine. You can still, they believe, become infected and therefore spread it to others who have not yet been vaccinated. They're also trying to get a handle on the variants, and I think that's what's really concerning. Some of the top experts, if anyone's heard the new head of the CDC, Ms. Walensky, certainly that's a something that she's expressed is that they are proven to be much more infectious. For example, the UK variant is now about 100% of the people. That's the very what they see now when they're tested. So it's taking over rapidly. It's um it causes more serious illness. And it just spreads very easily. So unfortunately, we can't really let up much. And we don't know if our past practices, so not to be gloomy. Uh these things are still to be decided, but a little bit of why I'm mentioning this is we have a lot of things coming up where it is going to be the season for doing more sports and and having other activities, including town meeting. So I think we just need to keep it in the back of our heads that we need to be flexible as we get closer to that and decide if there are any other measures we need to take or adjustments to arrangements and that kind of thing. So it's an ever-changing landscape. And we're always happy to to work with everyone on that. It's been great working together in the past. And maybe we should at some point have a meeting in advance of that in case we need to make adjustments.
We're good. Um Darrell, I have one question. Talk about the different variants. Is there any more information? Uh is the current menu of vaccines just as effective against these new variants and what how they're originally tested against the old variant?
There is some promising information that it is effective. But to what extent? And there are so many variants that are beginning to emerge that that's hard to know, which is also an important reason of why they want to get people vaccinated as soon as possible because it will stop the spin-off of variants. And then we won't be chasing it all the time. So that's um an important aspect of it.
One thing to add about the schools, just it's exciting for parents. I know that next week, the middle school and high school are going back to four days a week, which is which is great. I think it's very good for the students' mental health to be back at school. And then five days a week by the end of April. So so the kids are excited to, believe it or not, kids are excited to be in school more often. So.
Yeah, no, it's a wonderful thing to see, but that's also why the schools are concerned. We don't want to take a step backwards. So.
No, and and I mean, my.
Careful over the holiday.
My kids have also been part of the pool testing and and from their perspective, it's it's easy. So I I'm disappointed to hear that there were so few people who signed up. Um, one other thing, Darrell, I just want to ask you a question. You said one thing about like that people that are vaccinated can carry the virus. I read an article that said the opposite of that yesterday. I don't know. Um, I thought there was some research that showed that people who had maybe it was just one of the vaccines do not actually carry the virus.
So far, what I've seen, the prevailing opinion is that they can. There is the belief that they will perhaps have less virus and then less to shed. But I think what's confusing right now for folks, or they're trying to figure it out to the extent it's can be figured out is why are the cases going up so much now? It's been um a sharp increase recently. So and it really, given that vaccinations are going up, we did not expect that.
I think that was the Pfizer one that they were that articles on, George. And I think that Darrell's right because, you know, we've now vaccinated about 33% of the people in the state. And with one dose and 20% have received the full dose. Um and we're seeing the cases close to where we were last spring. So um that that means it's occurring in 67% of the population instead of the whole population. So.
Right, yeah.
And it could be that it's because people are saying, okay, we're we're done with the pandemic and are not wearing masks or distancing or maybe some of the other things, but we don't know yet.
Yeah, the article I read was actually from the CDC suggests that vaccinated people do not carry the virus. So it came, it wasn't just a opinion piece from a news article. It was from the CDC.
Could be numbered. I will say that, you know, I read something. We all have. We all read little blips and pieces here and it's hard to piece together. But the one I read is just kind of interesting. It talked about how the people who are the first to get vaccinated, the people who are being the most cautious anyway. And how it's kind of a mass psychology of like, we're done and this everyone's heading out there. There could be a number of different reasons. I think it's going to be more representative, probably like three months from now, actually more symbolic or of how the the future stands. So um I think people still need to wear masks, still need to be safe and get vaccinated as soon as they can.
Okay, I'm going to go read the CDC because what I was reading earlier today was from some of the manufacturers of the vaccines and their their comments, which were not that.
Oh, I can send you the article if you want, Darrell.
No, I'm sure I'll find it.
Okay.
Um Zach, did you have anything to add?
No, not to that update. I do not today.
Okay. Thank you. Very good. Very good. I think it's done there. All right, if there's not anything else, I'm gonna move on to agenda item number three. Uh consideration of reappointment as we're at the request of Town Clerk Jackie Morris to the Board of Registars, okay, Rubenstein, for a term to expire, uh expire April 1, 2024.
The vote.
Background material. Move by Paul, second by Jeff. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
All right, very good. Uh number four groundwater.
Don't forget to vote, Eric.
You gotta say I am I as well.
I'm just too excited to get, you know, you got the majority, but yes, I will give my support. I as well. Thank you. It is my line, isn't it? Um, number four, groundwater connection can uh Protection Committee update. It says here, Brian Moore, is that? Is it Brian? Is it gonna be um Tom?
Brian's probably both.
Brian's here.
Brian's here and Tom Trainer and Darrell's been involved also.
Background material, you have a mission statement which they are proposing.
That is correct.
Hey there, Brian. I don't want my screen. It's all. Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Brian. I hand the floor. Oh, there you are. I'll hand the floor over to you.
Well, the Groundwater Protection Committee was revamped and and kind of reconstituted after being dormant for several years. We're an advisory committee, so we don't really do things I don't believe of than just advise other town boards and committees. And for that reason, we wanted to clarify the status and purpose of the committee. So we came up with the proposed mission statement that you have in front of you. I don't see how it's necessary to read in the record unless you want me to. But it clearly states that we meet on a regular basis on a regular basis to identify and review issues that impact groundwater in the town and communicate with collaborate with other town um boards and committees in further and so promoting the preservation, protection of the groundwater in the in the town. And generally, that mission statement is designed to help us guide our committee in interactions with the other boards and committees in town at at those boards and committees discretion, since we don't really take the lead on things unless asked to. And um the committee is comprised right now of Barton Kunster, Andrea Stiller, Stefani Harrison, Melinda O'Neill, David Sossen, Thomas Trainer, and myself, Brian Moore's chair. Steven Constantine is a community representation and is an associate member. So now you've heard our mission statement and the people are on the board. We do have a little webpage and we have already produced a couple of fact sheets related to ongoing drought conditions in the mass DEPs PFAS private well sampling initiative. And we'd like, I believe we'd like to get the select board's affirmation that the mission statement we put out there is what they were envisioning for us uh as an advisory committee.
Oh, Brian, could I make some suggestions?
Sure, Paul.
Um first, let me say, I think you've done a nice job on the mission statement. Secondly, I want to say that I'm a former member of the Groundwater Protection Committee. So I can speak from the experience of being on that committee for a number of years. That there's two two ideas I have. One is we have an existing groundwater protection bylaw that the Groundwater Protection Committee wrote way back when when I was on the committee. I think it needs to be looked at to see whether it should be updated. It was maybe 20 years ago that we wrote that. And conditions have changed. Maybe it's fine the way it is, but I hope that your committee would review it. The second idea I had is that DEP has been pushing this idea of a local bylaw that would deal with drought situations. So where there's a drought, they recommend that communities have the authority to direct people to stop watering their lawns, stop using water, stop drying on groundwater resources or public water supply resources in order to preserve water. The idea here is that if one property owner in a in a neighborhood is using a lot of water and we're all on wells, we may end up with the other people in the neighborhood not having adequate water. So I think it might be worth looking at. Is that something that the town of Sherburne should have or not have? I understand it might be intrusive for those who want to do whatever they want with their own wells. On the other hand, we want to protect this resource for everybody to share. So it's just two ideas for you.
Thank you. Those are exactly the type of ideas that we would be looking into and forming. Specifically, now that you've called out these two, the board will come up with a consensus and get back to you or other town boards and commissions um with our answer to those two items.
Thank you. If I could add, Brian, Paul, we've we've already from our very first meeting in November, been talking about both of those stuff.
Great.
Just quickly, I want to throw in and not to beat this up. It's my perception that the greater threat to groundwater in Sherburne is groundwater quality, not quantity. I think George Demler did some math a few years ago. Roger. Roger, that, you know, we total withdrawal over a year is only like 2% of the precipitation that lands on the day town and most of what we actually withdraw is actually gets reinjected back in. But really, the issues that threaten wells are actually groundwater quality. And I think that's to be vetted by the committee, but that's just my perception overall that um you know, wells are going bad more than they're going dry. That's that's uh my overall perception of it. But I mean, I I personally support this. I have one question. I guess to whoever you said you're advisory committee, which we know that. But you officially advisory under the um the Water Commissioners or even independent from that, you you just fall under the Board of Selectmen. How does it structure this fall? Does anyone recall?
I believe that the genesis of the groundwater of 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 our entity originated at the direction of the Board of Selectmen and ultimately serves in a somewhat subservient fashion to the Board of Health due to the fact that the Board of Health is the town entity which would adjudicate and has jurisdiction over those resources in town wells.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, please go, George.
Just one recommendation. When you guys are looking at um banning watering lawns, I just want you to think about property values because there are some people who have extensive gardens which intend enhance their to to do an overall ban would really potentially hurt a lot of people's property values. So I would I would think about that, not just do a blanket ban because some people do have wells that can produce more water on their property and in their on an aquifer. I I just want you to consider other things than than just banning townwide. I would be more thoughtful than that.
I think, George, the bylaw, the model bylaw talks about alternate days watering. They don't shut off the water. They they restrict it. And the issue for Sherburne is not that this we're we don't have one aquifer that supplies everybody because there's also ledge and rock. People, we don't know where everybody's drawing their particular water from. There are some communities that have a single aquifer and it's easily identified. But there are also communities with fragmented aquifers, and I believe we're one of those. So because one guy's got a lot of water over here doesn't mean the next guy has got
right, water. That's my point. So maybe I could water my lawn every day and it doesn't affect anybody, but on another side of town, somebody could. So I think in towns that have municipal water supplies and their whole water runs low, if people all water their lawns, is a whole different situation than when us all having private wells. So I just think about that. Don't just that that was my point. I want you to think about it thoughtfully and not just a townwide ban on watering.
I can assure you, George, I love my garden, so.
I know, Brian. I just wanted, I just had to state that when Paul brought up the watering of lawns.
Okay.
All right, very good. Now, the comments, I think, uh actually, do you want to, should we take a vote? Yeah, let's take a vote, a supporter. Is there a motion relative to the mission statement as presented before us on our background material?
It's almost.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
I am I as well. Okay, very good. Thank you, guys, very much, and uh see you at the meetings.
Thank you very much, Eric, and thank you for selecting.
Thank you. Excuse me, um next up, consideration of approval of general obligation bond, Heidi Doyle, Town Treasurer.
Good evening. At a couple meetings ago, I asked for an approval for a borrowing anticipation of the library, the 1.6 million. And initially, we were going to try and do a portion of that or go for a year, trying to see what the timing was with the library. Um and how the capital items are coming out for this year. There's several large ticket items as well. So I've been speaking with bond council and trying to come up with the best ways to capture the bond market right now, which is still favorable. I mean, it is creeping up, but the more I can long-term bond in some ways would be, I think, in the town's benefit. Um, so even from this, I'm looking at maybe taking the 1.6 million just now for six months and seeing what passes at the town meeting and combining last year's capital articles with a good portion of the library money, which A good portion of the library money, which by. October will know what portions we've needed. Will also know what we can long term bond and what portion we might keep aside for. Contingencies or things that come along the way, what left, what's left on it. So I guess, I don't know if I need a vote to clarify from my prior borrowing, if that was a year or timeline, I'm not sure how you handle that. But I'm looking at doing a general obligation bond probably in October with last year's capital articles and a majority of this year's capital articles that passed. Then we have a few contingencies, I have to speak with bond councils such as Pine Hill Access Road, which has an earmark, I can't long term bond that until that's decided, so that will have to stay short term. Leland Wells might have to be short term as well, but we look, we'd get at least two and a half to three million together, which would make a substantial portion to try and. Get the favorable interest rates for long term. So I was looking to see if I could get approval to move forward with. Putting a package together.
Move approval.
Heidi, are we approving just your six month borrowing? Or are we approving the, what you'll eventually do in the fall?
Well, I think I'm going to have to come back with you as it gets closer to the fall with an exact number, so right now I'm asking you to improve the one point six million for six month borrowing. Instead of the full time and then come back with you with what after town meeting, what settled out and maybe a more fine tuned plan with Pine Hill Access and some other ones.
Perfect, that's good, I just want to clarify.
I'll second Paul's motion.
Let's see, all in favor Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am I as well, okay?
Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks Heidi.
And now before us, six A, six B and six C, you know, start with six, this is back to the, to the town meeting issues, some of them were pushed from last meeting. And I think this, with this, we should finalize a lot of this year's town meeting. So first up, twenty twenty one annual town meeting warrant and on this budget. First bullet consideration spot authorization of design and construction of Laurel fields. Do you want to start the discussion here in the board, is there anyone that wants to present on this?
Uh, yes, so Gavin Missier, one of the board members. We just had some, some items we wanted to go over in regards to some further. Research we had done. So in regards to some of the, the concerns about the recyclability and wastefulness of the turf. Uh, we have found that crumb rubber that's being used in these. Turf fields would otherwise have gone to landfills many times, and so oftentimes. By doing turf fields, you're actually helping landfills from getting a ten to twelve year period. Of not getting materials that would be there in that timeframe. We have also investigated recycling options, there are methods for reusability. Companies that are doing that with turf fields currently so that they are avoiding landfills. Uh, and there are companies that are in the works right now. Uh, overseas that are starting here in the U S. That will actually be recycling the materials of the turf fields. Uh, and their expectation is that by the time the end of life has come from this turf field that those. Companies will be up and running for recycling the materials. If there is a cost involved for the recycling. That would be paid for by the rec department and the revenue that they're getting from the field. Especially after that ten year period when. The bond would be paid off and there would be a lot more revenue to use for that purpose. Regarding health risks, we had done some more research. Regarding toxins in the pellets and the groundwater contamination concerns. The government of Massachusetts has deemed the health risks, risks from the artificial turfs to be low risk. Uh, and they cite studies in two thousand nineteen from the EPA. And Centers for Disease Control and Consumer Product Safety Commissions. Where they are all estimating through research and studies that exposure is low risk. Uh, and the EPA also has reports stating the same. Uh, and so we have links to those studies for folks who would want to see them. Uh, in regards to those low risks from both the state and the federal government. There had been conversations about could the money be better spent just making the grass fields better? And so we had done our due diligence on that portion of it. We have spoken to various donors who have already committed to turf donations and they've pretty much made it clear that. Their involvement to donate to make the grass fields be much better than they are now would be non existent. That they're interested in turf fields only. It goes pretty much the same for volunteers who are going to be helping us on the fundraising committee. Uh, that their hope is for a turf field that fundraising for improving the current grass fields would not be there. Obviously, if there was a bond from the, from the town to improve the grass fields. The rec committee would not be able to be paying that bond off because the revenue from the grass field use wouldn't come close to being able to pay off any bond. So if we were just working on the grass fields and that's it. Uh, it would be a, a cost to the taxpayers in the town. Aside from that, obviously, the grass fields. Require the pesticides and the fertilizer, I know there are concerns about that and irrigation to make them as nicely we would like them to be. Uh, and then lastly, the improvements that would be made with a, a big investment that after a year or two. That same investment would have to be made again to try and make sure that they maintain that same level. Uh, I know there was talk about possible financial risks to the town for the municipal bond in the first place. We had gone over the data from a financial perspective that our model is like the Woodhaven project. In that we are paying for the bond ourselves with revenue from the fields, so would not be a cost to the taxpayers. At all, and the warrant is being worded in such a way that. We cannot get the bond unless we raise the other three million dollars as well. There are concerns about lights, that is not an issue, there are no plans at all for lights on this field. Uh, and our revenue calculations are based upon daylight hour use only, so it does not require any nighttime use to create the revenue needed. To pay for itself. And I know there was concern in regards to the extra cost ten years from now to replace the turf. Our revenue calculations also include putting away a savings every year for turf replacement. And we are doing that in a conservative way that we will have the money for replacement within ten years. Even though the turf is expected to last ten to fifteen years. So we are taking the low end of that to make sure we have it covered. Uh, I know that there were concerns about the abutters, we are putting together a document to send out to the abutters, I know Dave Goldberg was working on that. Uh, and so that will be sent out to them so they can be aware of the status. Uh, and lastly, I wanted to just quickly talk about. The temperature concerns, we've done some more research regarding the temperature of the turf fields. And so in states like Texas and California and Florida. The temperatures can reach up to a hundred sixty, a hundred seventy degrees on the hottest days in those states. Uh, I can't remember exactly who or how it was mentioned, but I think two hundred degrees was mentioned at one point in time, we looked everywhere to find that temperature and we could not find that. But we did find temperatures of a hundred sixty, a hundred seventy in those states that I mentioned. In New England, the hottest they're really getting to is a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty. So we are aware of that on the board. And we have found research that shows that new generations of turf fields. Uh, have methods of using surfaces that can cool that by up to thirty degrees. Uh, and that alleviates the issue quite a bit. On top of that, the research shows that those temperatures that are being taken are actually. On the surface itself, the moment you start to get six inches, twelve inches above the surface, it dissipates quite a bit, so you're not seeing those same temperatures. Above the surface, regardless, most towns, what they tend to do is. In the summertime, when these issues become more serious, they are avoiding. Turf field usage between the hours of noon and four P M when the sun's at the highest in the sky. That's really when those issues happen, so it's. About an eight week period in the summer, just during those hours that we would have to be concerned with. And of course, there would still be grass fields available for any club teams or town teams that were concerned about temperatures on the turf fields. We would still have approximately seventy percent of Laurel would still be the grass fields to be used for teams that had concerns for that. So just wanted to let everyone know the research we had done over the past couple of weeks to try and. Uh, alleviate some of the concerns that folks had mentioned. Uh, we feel very confident that all of these things will help to make sure that everyone in town is safe. And that they can be used for all the kids in town. Thank you.
I just had a quick, a quick question about, I see some of the redrafted language there, so it says, as you indicated, that the commission has to first raise three million. Before they'll authorize the bond for one million. Would the debt service be paid from a three million or would it be from the revenue as it comes in from the rental of the fields and is there some way to kind?
Yeah, so from the revenue from the field, so we have done a, a ton of research regarding. The revenue of this, of the two fields and it's approximately three hundred thousand to three hundred thirty thousand a year in revenue. And so putting away a hundred and twenty thousand a year. For the replacement of the fields ten years from now. Brings that remaining amount down to approximately a hundred and eighty thousand in remaining revenue. And the debt service on the bond would be between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty thousand per year based upon the interest rate. Which the hundred and eighty thousand would cover easily. Uh, leaving. Uh, quite a bit of revenue to use for programs and projects for everybody in town. Uh, and that's, you know, one of the bonuses as well, the, the other bonus is that once that bond is paid off ten years from now, when we use the. The saved one point two million to replace the turf fields in ten to twelve years. The bond no longer exists and the hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand that was being put toward the bond for the first ten years. Becomes more profit for the town to use the programs and or other things as well.
What's being proposed here, a ten year bond?
Yes.
And you're, okay. And uh, so the other question I had, the concern I had last week is, it's still a, a capital thing and, you know, we talked about, and I think you've laid out a decent plan about how to maintain the capital thing, but it's going to have a limited life, not just the surface. Twenty, thirty years from now, might just dig up and abandon the whole thing. Is there some way to guarantee that there's some lump sum, call it a bond, whatever you want to call it in there, to guarantee the end of life of this, of this asset?
So I, I, I don't think that there is any harm and after the ten year bond is paid off. That there's a certain amount put towards. The end of life thirty years for down the road, that's certainly a possibility, and I, I think that when the town is seeing that revenue come in after the first ten years. It would be very easy to use a portion of that revenue for that purpose.
Okay. Um, okay, and, and just, you know, I did, I've talked to, you know, certain other communities that have these things, I talked to the actual people that operate them, I didn't talk to vendors. Because they're going to get a certain thing, I didn't talk to people who are kind of anti, the people who are just, who are administrators who simply operate these devices. I expected more of a negative feedback and to be honest, I got more of a positive feedback than I expected, so. I will say that, um, you know, the only downside they said is if you rent fields, you can have maybe might replace the surface in eight years, that's something to do a high use there. But as far as other aspects of it, you know, they talked about that, um. You know, it was a good surface, it was a good asset, they said that the, um, the compounds they have have progressed so much to have these. The upper surfaces of non toxic compounds, to even aspects of other compounds that actually can uh, keep the temperature, surface temperature down. The equivalent, made equivalents like buying a mattress, you know, you can pretty much get what you want if you're willing to pay for it. Um, but all that being said, I'll actually push this to other people on the select board, are there any questions from the select board? Jeff?
Yeah, I wanted to ask Gavin, when you ran the revenue model on the use and fees for the field, what portion percentage wise ballpark of the use? Of paid time for the field was town teams versus out of town teams?
That's a great question, so we intentionally did not include the town team revenue. And the purpose of not including that is because it's revenue that is already being seen by the recreation committee, and so we are not including any revenue from the town as well.
Well, well, that sort of answers my question, but what I'm getting at also though is what percent of the use of the field is in town teams versus out of town teams?
Yes, and so we looked at past years, not two thousand twenty for obvious reasons, but looked at previous years from. The various sports and how many hours they use. In those years at Laurel. Uh, and we assume the same number of hours being used on the turf fields and it totaled around four hundred to five hundred hours total between all of the town teams. So with approximately twenty four hundred hours of daylight time. Not including school hours, you know, in the spring and fall, we don't include the school hours. Uh, it's approximately twenty percent are town hours and eighty percent are out of town hours. I should point out that our numbers do not assume a hundred percent rental. So the remaining two thousand or nineteen hundred hours available that wouldn't be used by the town. Our model does not assume that we are renting it for the entire. Amount necessarily, so. Uh, but to answer your question about twenty percent or so of the used hours would be some town teams.
Yes, I have a major problem with that, if we're putting these four million dollar fields in regardless where the funding's come. We're benef- benefiting eighty percent of the uses coming from outside. I'm just making a statement here, you're not going to change my mind, just go ahead.
So what I want to explain is that the hours that they're using. Is not that we're saying they can't use more, that's the hours that they have. We're letting them use as many as they want, they only use that number of hours, so if they came to us and wanted six hundred hours, they could get that.
I understand.
All right, let me recognize George.
I have a question, what's the issue with getting revenue from out of town use, why, why don't we want out of town users?
Because I just soon have our town use our fields.
Well, if, if, but if we're not using all the hours, why can't we have people from Framingham coming into town to use it?
Well, I think it could be unavailable when you want to use it, that's why.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, are you saying that if?
I'm not saying anymore Gavin, keep going, go with your presentation, I'm done. You've answered my question, thank you.
Okay, so to, if, if the towns want, town teams want more hours, the rec committee is willing to work with them to make that happen. If for some reason the board felt that when the town was not using the field. That they would rather have it sit and not be rented creating revenue. Then that would just affect how much we can pay off the bond. But we would certainly be willing to rent it less if the town wanted to pay for a portion of the bond.
Understood.
I have a question actually for David, David Williams, um. We, we touched on this a little bit, I think, um, earlier, um, earlier today. We have six, six and six B. Six is not to put it on the warrant, right, that's six B, six B is to put this on the warrant. Agenda item number six.
Well, we want, we wanted to cover everything, yeah.
Under the background material of item number six is actually warrant language, so are we voting on this warrant language, as we, as kind of voting to support this in concept, you know what I'm trying to say?
Well, we need the, uh, we need the language if we're going to finalize the warrant for you guys to sign it.
Okay.
We need to vote to include it, but we also need to then vote whether we support it or not.
But it looks like the support is six and the inclusion is six B. And the language is included.
Right, maybe we should make the votes together, like kind of take it out of order and vote on it to get, since we're, let's just discuss it once. And then first vote on whether we include it, then secondly, whether we support it. Because I think much different discussion.
Are you, yeah, you can do that, or you can, um, also just. Vote to open the warrant. And then, um. After you've discussed them all, vote to, um. Support and include and then vote to close the warrant.
But the warrant, it already is in the warrant, that's why I'm surprised, like we would have to open the warrant to, to include it.
I think I have it in the warrant in red, which means that it hadn't technically been.
Right, we hadn't voted to say we included it, but we don't need to open the warrant to do that.
Yeah, we do. Legally, you have to open the warrant.
We haven't, there's other things that we, after we've closed the, we don't vote on things until after we've closed the warrant, whether we want to include them or not. Why, why is this an exclusion, why is this one separate?
We voted to close the warrant back in January.
Right, and then since then, we've been voting on whether we want to include things on the warrant or not.
If there was a. What I was told is that when, if we had a placeholder. Before like, um. Right after we had done January seventh and started looking at the articles and the checklist. But I didn't have a placeholder in the warrant at that point, so. I mean, whatever, whatever.
There was a placeholder before we closed the warrant on this, because I made sure it was there.
Really?
Yeah. Look back because I guarantee it was there, right Diane, and Diane could confirm that because we made sure it was on there before.
If that's the case, then you don't need to vote to include.
Exactly. Exactly.
Are we modifying the language though? Is there any change? Like, do we need to modify the warrant?
As long as you didn't change the, uh, the, the purpose or any, you know, anything major, I, it's, you know, I can do it. As long as you don't have any major changes.
Uh, I, I like this current language, talk about the three million dollars. So I want to make sure that's in there, that they have to raise three million before actually had any authorization to it. I had a question about the last sentence. And it says, I know these things are always legalese and maybe I need Paul's help to, to read this. Um, how much obligation is it down? Last sentence is the amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any private donations in excess of the final project costs. Um, what does that mean? Cause already, you know, final project costs, you're done.
I think Gavin, um, the, the rec commission had changed the language a little bit, but
I think it's meant to say like if they is more than their three million, then our borrowing is gonna be decreased. Like, they don't necessarily, the millions of most they're gonna borrow. If they raise three point five million, the borrowing will be reduced to five, five hundred thousand. If they raise four million, the borrowing will be reduced down to zero. And I think that's their goal.
Exactly.
Have this, am I right Gavin?
That is correct.
Here, here it says, they scratched out the three million dollars. The three million is based on the estimated cost of construction. Is that right?
Yes, yes. So the estimated cost of construction is four million with contingencies. There's approximately five hundred thousand or so contingencies in that cost.
Okay, okay. So the amount, okay, I, I'm starting to get it now. I'm starting to get it.
Eric, just to give you a heads up, Sean Colleen has his hand up.
Oh, that, okay. Yeah, I get to turn on my little virtual thing. Go ahead, Sean.
I just wanted to make a point. The agenda item is listed as opening and closing the warrant. And whether you do for this item or not, which seems to be the discussion, you're gonna for the next item. So in all likelihood, you're gonna open the warrant anyway. So the discussion of whether or not you need to really doesn't matter.
No, I, I think it's just on this particular article, George was.
Well, my, my point on this article in particular was that we already have it on the warrant. Um, and what I thought we were just voting on whether to support it or not.
So since six B, um, this, this, whatever administratively or procedurally, I should say, six B, you have to vote to open. At the beginning of six B, we have to have, take a vote to open, do the whole thing, discuss each of those items and then vote to close. Is that correct? On the six B, that's a procedural. Okay. So maybe we'll formalize it there. I don't know if we actually uh, maybe take a vote now or whatever, because we still gotta talk about, you know, town, town buildings and whatever other budgets there are under the select board. Um, under, uh, under six. Maybe just a, a quick little survey. I actually am inclined to vote to support this. I, I frankly wasn't last week. I've done some research. Um, I'm actually reasonably inclined to support this. I'd like to see other select boards, uh, members' thoughts on this as well.
I think, I think there's other people that want to speak about it tonight. I think, you know, last week, we had a lot of people that had a lot of negative comments. I think there's some people specifically who came here tonight to, to talk about how important this is for our youth in this town. Um, I'm just gonna start a little bit, just by the fact. I just want to point out that lacrosse was supposed to start on Monday. But since we have grass fields, it didn't. So instead of being, talk about health issues, the kids sat inside in front of their computers again this week instead of being out on the lacrosse field. Um, that's, that's number one right there. Uh, number two, the, the group from rec has set up the Friends of Laurel Field and within a few days, they have over a hundred supporters that have signed up for it. It's a very important issue to a lot of parents in town. It's something that's gonna get our kids more active. I, I think it's something we really need to consider and listen to other people in town. So I, I think there's other people here. I know Craig Seal raised his hand. He has something to say. So if you want to recognize him, Eric.
I think what we'll do is we'll go through the slackboard first. Thank you, George.
Oh yeah, no, that makes sense, Jeff. Of, of course. I just, I just wanted to say, I wanted to point out that somebody had raised their hand, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
And I'm gonna ask if people can click on the participants button and use your virtual, uh, raise hand. I'll take people in order where I see the virtual. I know everyone likes to wave at the camera. But I, I miss those all the time. That's George. He's my eyes and ears and something like that. But people can actually look at it. But yeah, I would like to, I do want to finish discussion amongst the select board, you know, I gave my little opinion where I've kind of wavered on this a little bit. I'm inclined to say, but I'm, I can change my mind within the next half hour. So Jeff, did you want to add anything more? I know you
Well, I can. I just want to correct one thing quickly. The reactions button, if you want to raise your hand, it's actually not under participants. It's under the reactions button on the lower right.
Okay, okay. For me, if I click on participants, it shows me the column.
Oh, maybe because I'm the host. That may be because I'm the host, yeah.
And then it's a raised hand. It shows like a little hand like this.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anyway, so no, I'm opposed to, to this. I, I would, uh, be in favor of George's point about the grass fields. I don't feel it's a fair comparison because I think that if we put a stone base under natural grass fields, that it will resolve the drainage issues. And so I'm opposed to this project completely.
Okay. Uh, Paul, did you want to make any statement before I go on to the public?
Yes, uh, so I've been through this some years ago when this same kind of proposal came up before. I know how important sports are. I'm a father of kids who are active in sports when they were at Dover Sherburne. I'm very impressed with the notion that people are gonna donate money and put skin in the game. Three million dollars is a very impressive contribution level. The way the article and proposed motion is written, it really makes sure that the, the parents and the supporters of this idea are gonna back it with donations. And because of that, I am going to vote to support it at this point. But like, like Eric just said, I'm certainly convincible one way or the other. But I think sports and our kids and making sure they have safe places to play that are good for athletics is good for them. Therefore, it's good for the town. It's good for the community. So I'm willing to give this a chance.
Okay, well said. It seems like we've all, um, made a statement. I'm gonna go, uh, to the participants where I've seen, uh, from the public, I've seen the raise hands.
Before you go, before you do that, Eric, David Williams is raising his hand, not
You can use the raise hand button too. You're not exempt from my requirement.
Honestly, I can't even find it. Okay. I don't see it at all. I think Jeff took my hand. I just wanted to confirm that, uh, this was on the original warrant, uh, before the warrant closed. So, um, technically it's already included on the warrant. Um, you're just, um, reviewing the language and what, how, what you'd like for language.
Cause like I said, I do want the three million to be included in it. I think that's, that's important here.
Great.
Okay, I, I'm gonna go to the general public in the order that I've seen them. Um, Craig, and I'm sorry if I miscount your last name, Seal, Craig Seal. Okay.
Yeah, you got it right. So, uh, you know, thanks for, for hearing all the different perspectives.
Craig, before you start, if you could just identify yourself and your address and that's, that's kind of how we typically.
Yep, yep. So Craig Seal, I'm, I'm at one ten Bogusso Brook. Uh, been in town for about twelve years or so. Um, uh, so I am one of the co-presidents of the Dover Sherburne Soccer Club. Uh, and I'll just sort of tell you what we think of the project from our perspective. We're very much in favor of it and there's a variety of reasons for that. You know, we have, uh, across Dover and Sherburne, there's about seven hundred kids that, um, play in our program every season. And about a hundred fifty or so parent volunteers. So along with the other youth sports who are a pretty big part of the fabric of the community. Um, the turf field specifically would be, um, a, a big plus for us for a variety of reasons and as a, our board has voted to support it. Uh, you know, one of the reasons is that it's, it's a much better surface for learning soccer. And this is something that is basically an everyday use for us. So we would be using it especially for our younger kids to learn soccer skills. It's a lot harder to learn some of these things on, on grass uh, than it is on turf. So the better thing to do is to learn it on turf and then apply it on, on grass. So that's sort of an everyday use thing. Um, another reason why we would want to have it is because we frequently experience rainouts. And there's also the issue of the fields, the grass field not being available for any sort of preseason. As George mentioned, we have games. You know, we have games, um, not this coming weekend, but our first games are April tenth. And none of our teams have practiced yet. Um, and they won't be able to until sometime next week. We're not entirely sure. So that's, that, you know, presents some, uh, problems in terms of potential injuries. And, um, you know, competitiveness as well. Um, the, the rainouts are a problem also because, um, for many times, for many games, uh, those games don't end up being played. And so our kids get shortchanged for that reason. Uh, there are cases where, um, we, we know that the fields are going to be closed, the grass fields. And we'll go out and rent whatever turf field is available in order to play these games. And so we're out there making our parents and families go out of town. And at the same time, we're paying thousands of dollars for turf fields. So we'd, we'd much rather, and the parents would much rather play in town. And we as a club would much rather give our money to, um, a turf field in town. And then the last thing that I'll mention is that we have, uh, some programs that have an absolute need for turf. So we run a program called Top Soccer, which is a program for kids with disabilities. And, um, in this program, it basically pairs, uh, kids with disabilities with high school, uh, kids. And they sort of take them through and teach them soccer and, you know, basically turn them into athletes, uh, so, soccer players. And this includes kids that have, that are in power chairs uh, and kids that have motor deficiencies and they need to do this on turf. So, um, sorry. For that reason, this program absolutely needs turf. We've, we've been able to get by with the few hours that we can get on the high school turf, but, but there's, there's problems with that because the schedule bounces around all over the place. Which makes it a problem for the program itself. Uh, plus we're not able to get that field, um, as often as we would like. And we can't give these kids the same offerings that we do for our other kids, uh, in our program. So those are the reasons why we think turf is a really, would be a big plus for us.
Okay, so, um, next up is, uh, Thomas Trainer. And if you put your hand down after you speak, please.
If I can figure out how to do that, Derek, I'll, I'll make sure I do that, but thank you. No, I, I spoke at your prior meeting, so I won't be long, but, uh, as you've heard before, I'm, I'm an opponent. And I think I would ask the, uh, board here to look at the long term. Uh, the, uh, water quality, that, that field is surrounded by wetlands. It's a high water table. It's in a prime, uh, town aquifer. That's been identified as a potential, uh, good aquifer for a town well. Not, uh, not, uh, two, a couple streets away. Uh, the EPA mass, uh, uh, decisions are quite dated in, in the research they're based on. I think the jury is still out health-wise. I provided some more up-to-date information to the health department. I'll let them, uh, review it. But, uh, we, we have, uh, one set of groundwater in this town. It has served us well, uh, for inhabitants of this town for thousands of years. And, uh, I think you're putting in, in danger if you put several hundred thousand pounds of recycled tires in this field. No, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Thomas. Um, Marion Neuton, I don't see you there.
Uh, yeah, I'm here. Uh, Marion Neutra, uh, twenty-five Prospect Street. I'm speaking just as an individual. I just want to echo, uh, well, first I should say I really listen to what the parents and the proponents of, uh, of the, the kids' sports say. And, uh, I don't at all discount the value of those things. Especially if they're doing a disabled kids program. I mean, that's very hard, hard to oppose. And I so value what the, uh, what the, what the, uh, recreation commission does in this town. They're really amazing. Uh, I, like Tom though, I have to say, I also take the long view. And uh, Gavin's summary of where the recycling of these things stands right now didn't, didn't reassure me, nor does what I read reassure me. Uh, there really is right now certainly no recycling of this in Massachusetts. And no true recycling of these materials even in the country. So right now they're either going into landfills, but not even into landfills. They're going into the countryside. Or, or they're being shipped abroad. And we know when they get shipped abroad, that, uh, it's often, you know, in, in, in a global sense, environmentally not that great. But, um, but I see there's both sides and, uh, it's hard to prove that there's a health risk when it's inverted, the science is kind of early stages in terms of regulations go. So we can't say anything about that. We can just sort of worry in the long term about it in terms of the water supply. So I turned, I mean, on Eric's prompting, which I thought was a, a good idea at the last meeting, I looked around at other towns. And the first place I called it was Lincoln because, you know, I've always had kind of town envy of Lincoln. It's a really well-run town. They do a lot of things right. So, uh, I checked with Lincoln and, uh, it happens that their former recreation commission uh, commissioner, uh, is now their assistant town administrator. So he's still around. And I asked him, you know, what was the decision that Lincoln made? Does Lincoln have turf fields for their general sports? The answer is no. Uh, they considered it probably with all the same arguments that are being made here. And they decided against it. Because their field, I asked him why. He said, well, their field is, has a lot of wetlands around. He said, if it had been in the middle of town or in an area that was already developed, they wouldn't have worried about it. But in fact, they turned it down for environmental reasons, actually. And so, uh, this, actually it was this morning, yeah, just this morning on a call with the COVID team for Sherburne and Dover. I slipped in a question to the Dover Board of Health about turf fields in Dover outside of the high school. Um, and they considered it a few years ago and also decided against it. For a lot of the reasons you're hearing here. So, uh, I, I just want to kind of remind people that while we go ahead with this, we should understand that, uh, recycling could be a problem in the future. And water supply risks could be a problem and we just have to be willing to take those risks.
Okay, well said, well said. I don't see any more from the public. Is there anyone else that would just speak from the public? I, I'll see you, George. I gotta make sure.
Yeah, yeah, whenever.
Yeah, I don't see any other hands. I don't see anyone using the old, the old school hands. Uh, George, go ahead.
Uh, just wanted to point out, uh, well, I do see a couple people, Lanny Rubin and Addie Weiss are both waving their hands in their cameras though. Um, but one, one thing I do want to point out, what Marion said about Dover, actually they are considering it again at Chicaring from my conversations with field hockey and lacrosse because there is such a need for it. For, as Craig talked about with soccer, field hockey is a whole nother thing for, for girls. Like, it's a different sport on grass and, and and turf. I just know from experience that our kids were woefully behind when they played in Franklin, when the girls were playing on that all the time. And also I want to comment on the ADA compliant thing that Craig brought up. I think that's a huge thing. And Paul, you brought this up, that we don't have a lot of ADA compliant areas in town. And by these improvements, not only make it ADA compliant for the kids, but the fields will be ADA compliant. So parents that are disabled can go and watch their kids, which they can't right now at Laurel. It's not an ADA, it, it, people can't get out there. So I think, I think that's a huge thing, that it opens up the fields to anybody who's disabled.
Okay, so I'm just scrolling around because I gotta move around the screens. Okay, I do see you now. Please go ahead. You need to unmute yourself.
You need to unmute yourself, Lanny. There you go.
Uh, as Paul said, this issue came up a number of years ago when there was the prospect of a commercial development and actually on the playing fields. And I just, you know, want to check i- i- how much risk people are willing to take because if it could conceivably endanger the water because of how low it is, by that same token, whatever it is that endangers the water, endangers the human beings that play on it. And, you know, the material is basically a inorganic material. That's why the temperature rises. That's why it really can't be purged and purified. And again, this is marginal, but if we're talking about risk, then let's, you know, talk about risk that you do have a potential If we're talking about risk, then let's, you know, talk about risk that you do have a potential. A human and and biological contaminant. That's issue in addition to the other silly little issues like kids come home with it on their spikes and it gets dragged all over the house and. Uh you know, et cetera, but it is potentially the even the worse issue. Um because it doesn't drain, it can develop contaminants which can get into wounds. And it can conceivably create a a real risk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And um and Addie, I've seen you, but I don't see you anymore.
She just, she actually just texted me because she got disconnected.
Okay.
I don't see her in the waiting room, though. Usually, they like log back in again. I don't.
Yeah, I think she's trying, but.
Was there any more discussions? I would like to give her a chance to speak, but I can't wait too long.
I don't see any other hands or wave, physical hands or yellow hands.
Okay. Well, I think we've all said what we what we are gonna say. And I think uh this is, this is a polarizing issue and uh I think no matter how this board. Votes to support or not support is largely a symbolic vote because no matter what, I mean, I think it'll end up on the warrant or is on the warrant, who knows? Um I think uh um Gavin probably has a uh homework cut out for him to make the two thirds vote necessary at town meeting itself. You know, because it sounds like uh you're gonna have to some of some support on that. Um. I may.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I may add advisory, talk to advisory, we um recommend a modification to the language just to assure some. Always certain amount that's uh held in a certain fund to uh do final abandonment of this because. Um I I am inclined to support it, I'll say, but it seems like, you know, people keep talking about it's this, you know, foreign substance sitting uh sitting in. In the natural ground that I think at some point, we don't want this to just get abandoned and walk away and be like some artifact fifty years from now that, you know. Looks like something. I do want to make sure the funds put aside to make sure it gets properly um, you know, right to the lifespan of the complete thing, not just the. You know, resurfacing of it, but like I said, thirty years, maybe we don't do this anymore. We got something completely different going. Yeah, brand new type of grass, that's great.
So Eric, there's a couple of changes I want to make to the article. Like, for example, I want to put in there no lights. They represented no lights. I know the Butters, from the last time we went through this, were very upset about. Nighttime lights that were gonna shine in their windows and all that stuff. So I'd like to include that in the warrant article itself and in the motion. But we're not authorizing lights at this time.
And we'll do that when we hit six B. Would we do it now? Can we do that like at the advisory meeting? If we wanted to look into a specific language?
We don't normally write the motions. We normally write the article and give it to um advisory and they write their motions with council.
Okay, okay. I see Addie May is back on, so I'd like to recognize her.
Hi, thanks, Eric.
Thank you for using the raise hand emoji.
Yes, sorry. Trying to figure out it lower. Okay, so Addie May Weiss and I'm talking as a resident of One Jackson Road and just to say that. You know, just got home from another long drive, but coming from a turf field. Um. And all the concerns in throughout Sherborne, I'm sure definitely a lot of the indoor riding arenas already use. Pelotized rubber tires it for a lot of the indoor equestrian facilities, so they're in our environment already. Not that it's a good thing, but they're they're mixed with dirt. They're not, we kind of forget about them. Um. I'm sure, I don't know how many, I'm just, I know there's a number in Dover and and there's some in Sher- in Sherborne as well. And then the other thing is is Laurel Fields is. Surrounded by, I mean, Sassamon Trace was a former landfill. There's um. It's not, you know, not saying we want to make it any worse, but a lot of the uh it's not the, you know, there's not a lot of drinking wells right there. I know our aquifers are all throughout town and so it's always, you don't know where fissures are and all of that. So we all, you know. The entire town of Sherborne is in uh we, you know, protected groundwater concern, but. We have lots of turf fields in other towns. There are ways to do this to, if it's constructed correctly, there's ways to do this well. And the other thing is a lot of the newer turf fields have um. They have grates around them so that as kids leave the turf field, they're collecting the little rubber pelletized things so that it's. They're not tracking, it's contained. There's ways to make sure that what's installed stays installed and. Mitigates the risk of, you know, things migrating out to the waterways and they're, I mean, so much. That can be done well if and you've got a group of. Your Recreation Commission has been studying this and there's a lot of people who have looked at this and. Live here and want to live here and want to drink our water that want to do it right. So. Stopping it without giving it a chance to be done the right way, I think is uh it's frustrating, so.
Thank you very much, Addie. Okay, if.
Can I make a motion?
Okay, but the real vote's probably gonna come under six B. We'll probably do a minimal discussion and vote when we open the warrant. Are you looking to do?
I thought it was vote, no, we don't, we don't have to because as David said, it's already included on the warrant. So I think all we're voting on tonight is whether we support it or not.
Well, I do want to make sure that this this revised motion language ends up in there somehow. What do we do it now or six B? Because for my vote, I want the three million dollars in their language.
Oh yeah, definitely. I agree, I completely agree with you.
You're Eric.
Yep.
The 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 three million dollars is in the recommended motion from council. So do you want us to? Yeah, do you want us to work the um? That same language into the article?
Yes.
Yeah, as well as I think Paul's light restriction as well.
Okay.
Yes, put those in the article.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I definitely want the three million. I want the three million, Paul wants the lights. I think we both want them, to be honest, uh both things.
Oh, I want the three million too.
It'll help so the residents understand the issues, I think, too.
Yeah.
All of that.
The fact that 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 the parents care so much that they're willing to put up three million dollars to me is, let's give them a chance.
Yeah. So do we vote now to support it or do we vote after we open the warrant?
I think we do it simply um do it under six B, but I don't, I don't care. Honestly, procedurally, I'm not an expert at this stuff. I is, you know.
Fine, fine with me, Eric. We'll wait and do it at the next.
That way it gets, it gets, that way it kind of guarantees the languages in there. I'll put my notes aside here.
Okay.
So with that, I'll move on to the second bullet. And uh consider a supportive town buildings and facilities, a capital item from my Sean Colleen. How you doing, Sean?
Need to share anything, Sean? Are you okay?
I don't really need to. I don't know what was in your packet. Uh this just kind of got dropped. Um last week when I I kind of had the the hour of fame. So this this article is not, is is no different than the the previous uh three or four years. Where we're just, we're funding several projects um backfilling some. This year, we did up update the onsite insight report. I wouldn't bother boring you guys with that whole report. But it tabulates everything that's needed um over the next twenty years for for all the buildings. Which is the two fire stations, the police station, town hall, DPW. Um and soon to be library. We don't have a report. We'll we'll set kind of a zero year report once we have the library and know. You know, we have a starting point for that. So um what we did and uh for those that aren't aware, Peter Galitano is absolutely. Unbelievable at at manipulating the data. He he helped do some pivot tables um. And and kind of broke up the the. The projects that are due now, the projects in the future and and, you know, the difference between operating and and capital projects, so. We played around with those numbers a little bit. We had originally had, I think, four s- four thirty. Uh in the last capital budget meeting, we dropped that to three sixty nine. I don't know if that's showing on the warrant now, but that's what capital. Capital Budget Committee is voting on. Three sixty nine even, I believe. So if you want, I can read through the the broad description of those items or we don't need to.
I'm I don't have them in my background material. I can't find them unless I'm missing. Sorry, George, I think you're muted.
I was gonna say, I don't have them either, but I think we've gone through them already with Sean Avonley.
A little bit. I mean, the main presentation will be at the at the hearing. We we typically, I typically don't go through the bill, the facilities. Uh projects prior to that. Um I mean, the basis of it is the onsite insight report. And uh.
And is it a similar number to what we've spent in the last few years or is it larger or smaller?
Yeah, it is. Um last year was close to four hundred, I, or maybe it was four hundred.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Um and you know, we we still have some trailing because we've timed some projects with the library finished, so. Uh while some projects that were slated almost a year ago haven't happened, they're all gonna happen pretty quickly. Uh a- as we wrap that up because the site work all around town hall will all need to be finished at the same time.
I would say that I support this because we have to maintain our buildings. We've asked the taxpayers to support the construction and renovation and maintenance of our buildings. And if we don't continue to do this, we don't continue to invest in our buildings, we're gonna pay for it dearly. A ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, as the saying goes. So by all means, we should be supporting the insight evaluation. We should be supporting the notion of making continued. Investments in these assets that the town has.
Uh what's the value of the item again?
Three sixty nine.
What's that? Yes, don't have it.
Three sixty nine.
It's it's gonna be three sixty nine.
Okay. All right, is that a motion, Paul?
Yes.
Okay.
To support.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so there you go. I think a motion, a motion and second on the on the floor. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh Paul?
Hi.
Uh George?
Hi.
I am I as well. Very good. Oh, who's presenting this next? Is this you, David? Consider if we'll uh support budgets under the purview of the select board. Just this kind of rounding up. I think we talked to you before about. You know, where we could trim a little bit more and get another twenty dollars. Is that what this one's about? Okay.
Yes, um Deb uh Seifring, uh I believe she, yeah, she's on here too. So she worked on it this week as well. I I guess everybody worked on it this week. Um I can't throw that summary sheet up. I don't know if it's easier to type from that, yeah.
Which summary sheet uh did you ju- is?
They sent it a five oh five today, Jeff.
Okay. He sent one to me actually after that, I think, George, too. Is that right, David? Did you send one afterwards?
It hasn't changed, but that's, yeah.
Okay, hang on.
And it says um. Let me look.
It in total, it was bringing the select board budgets down by two hundred and twenty seven thousand. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes. Yeah, and it's for that service, a lot of health insurance, there's a premium holiday, property insurance renewal proposal.
Is this the spreadsheet you want me to show, David, or the uh warrant, draft warrant and ATM checklist?
The spreadsheet.
Which is the ATM article checklist?
Budget changes four one twenty one, Jeff.
No.
Well, he sent me something different. Is this what you want to see? Uh hang on.
I don't think it's a bu- I don't think it's a warrant checklist. I think.
The title of the, the title is budget changes four point one point two one.
Right, that's the one that I was just talking about. It's an Excel.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to bring it up, just curious. Uh the two twenty seven cut, what does that bring tax rate at?
Nineteen nineteen something.
Nineteen eighty five.
That's a good year.
Yeah, that that's assuming a two percent increase in property value.
That's always a estimate, a a big estimate, depending on a lot of different factors, obviously, like it never actually comes in.
Yeah.
But that's just based on the best budget models that we could look at, the uh just from my time in advisory, that's what.
Yes, that's correct.
But as you indicated at the last meeting, George, you don't want to start with twenty, and I'm glad.
No, exactly. And and I think and I'm and I and I'm happy with David and Deb and all the and any department heads who really kind of took a look at this. I know. The police reduced their budget by be by waiting on a hire, which I think makes sense considering we're in the process of hiring a new chief. So maybe we wait until a new chief comes in to make hiring decisions anyway. Um I I I think.
Yes.
Is this what you're looking for?
Yes.
Just tell me where you want me to nav- want me to zoom in or zoom out or navigate?
No, I think that's perfect.
That's perfect.
If you look at the previous budget model that we've been working with, it was dated March eighteenth twenty one and it says the current budget twenty nine eight eight six. If you go to the next column, it says select board April first, that's tonight, and the changes are listed there under budget changes. And those are all dropped, debt service down thirty nine thousand, health insurance down a hundred and twenty six thousand. Property insurance down forty eight thousand and police down thirteen seven six two. So taking an asterisk on the police um calculation, if you could click on the police tab. You can.
Hang on, please change this one here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. So you can see how they they came up with the uh thirteen thousand um. Savings on the police budget. So the top part of that, you have uh the salary budget of the three new FTE. And then reducing out those three officers and then adding back in an increase of overtime of one ninety two. So the net is thirteen seven. Um Dave Bento and Deb uh can talk more about um. The overtime calculation or that may have come just from Dave Bento.
Yeah, do you want to go over that or do you want me to explain what we discussed earlier before?
Yeah, I will, I can explain it. Yeah, so Dave gave me some numbers and I um plugged them in, but I didn't quite understand that the increase in overtime. Actually reduces the overtime that's currently in the model. So that number might go down even a little bit more. Um Dave and I didn't really have time to meet to uh calculated it completely, but that number will probably go down even a little bit more.
So the, David, so the board's aware, I I'm not sure if you caught this, what advisory had asked me to do was calculate. The newer overtime rate at the same hours that we used for FY twenty one. To reflect the fact that we were gonna remove those three additional FTEs. So that's where the overtime increases. Um to that new rate and that new number. But ultimately, the bottom line is the budget goes down.
Yeah.
So this is all good news, so why wouldn't we support this?
Absolutely. And I think I think this is, as we spoke last week, this was an effort, we said, let's see if we can sharpen our pencils and I think. We did with the budgets that fall under our purview, so I I I agree with you, Paul.
So I'd move to support.
Yeah, second.
All right. I guess uh all in favor, you guys have rearranged yourselves since he is sharing things, I'll take it. Uh Paul?
Hi.
Uh George?
Hi.
Uh Jeff?
Hi.
And I am I as well.
So Deb will update the um spreadsheet tomorrow and uh have a new version for April second and. Uh distribute it to everyone or we'll get it out, including advisory.
I do want to thank Deb for putting this together. Thank you, Dave. Thanks, everybody who worked on it.
Alrighty, thank you.
I'm I'm very rapidly because of my day job in oncology, um the the health insurance is not a good news thing. It's saving us money. But the reason it's going down is because people aren't getting a care because of COVID. Cancer, uh original cancer diagnoses are down forty percent this year, which means the disease is progressing. So it's it's good, we're getting actually a a month with no premiums because of underutilization, but it it's not a good thing for next year. So if you know anyone that's not seeing their doctor, tell them to go, please. It's true of cardiology also.
I bet you we'll see for the next decade odd residual aspects to this COVID, not and not just the disease itself, but what you just said there.
Yeah, lockdowns, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
My my, just as one one anecdotal thing, when my wife might was with my daughter at Children's Hospital. They asked why so many rooms had doors shut with somebody monitoring from the outside. There's so many kids there on suicide watch. That it it was disturbing. It was, it's it's really a problem. So thank God they're getting back to school more next week.
Yeah, other communities, um DSS uh reportings are way down just because the instances are happening, but the teachers don't have eyes on. Yeah, other communities, D S S reportings are way down, just because the instances are happening, but the teachers don't have eyes on the kids, there's a number of different things.
So, do you wanna unshare your screens, we can go back to the?
Well, do you want me to share something different, or no?
I think we're done with agenda item. B, yeah, I think we're ready to go to six B. And six B, the first, the first bullet should probably be quick.
Yeah, move to reopen the warrant, I guess is the first thing.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm all in favor, I'll get back in regular order, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
Okay, first item up.
You forgot to vote.
You keep forgetting to vote.
I'm just flying, it's a good thing, a good thing you don't need my vote, but yes, I am I as well. Absolutely. Oh, it's but, right back to Laurelfield, so we had a healthy discussion about it. I think there'll, there'll be a motion, I suspect it'll be a motion to support this, and this makes sure me, the motion should include the three thousand dollars, as it's written in background material. The, the no light, I think as.
Three million, not three thousand.
Three million, three million. The lights is Paul, and I would like to add, if some, and some makes an agenda, just, it doesn't have to be exact, but. That, there'll always be an appropriate amount of funds retained. Um, to actually do final abandonment of the field, I think that's a, that's some of the considerations I hear from some of the people who have environmental considerations. It's my consideration on this. And I don't know how it's written, but all I would like to see is some, again, appropriate amount of funds retained in perpetuity. To fund the final abandonment and removal of the field. Might be a generally past our lifetime.
So can I make a motion to place on the warrant? The article you just described.
Okay.
That is the original article amended. With the various items that Eric mentioned.
Second, in motion, okay. Move by Paul, second by George, all in favor, Jeff?
Nay.
Nay. Paul?
Hi.
And George?
Hi.
And I am I.
That's, put it on the warrant, now do we vote to support it, or?
Oh, is I misunderstood that, I'm in favor of putting on the warrant? Oh, I'm sorry, then I, can I change my, amend my vote? I'm in favor of letting the town vote on it, I'm just not in favor of the project, but I definitely think the town should have the chance to see it.
Thank you, that's, I thought maybe Jeff you would change after I.
I miss, I miss, I'm glad you said something, I misunderstood, and they sometimes, by the way, use the word decommissioning for the termination value.
Okay.
Now can I make a motion to support the article? For Laurelfields?
Okay, so moved by George. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Nay.
Paul?
I'm gonna stand with the students on this, so I'm gonna vote, yes.
Okay, and George?
I.
And I am I. Okay, I think we have that there. And like I've, you know, told the same group, it looks like you have a little bit of an uphill battle to get to two-thirds, so this is do the.
They do have a website out there with a lot of information for people that wanna read more about it, so.
Okay, this next one, a consideration inclusion of warrant, upper Charles rail trail access easements, this is for Laurel Farms, correct?
So, move to put that on the warrant.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
I'm gonna say I, but I just wanna explain to our viewers, this is something we discussed before. It enhances the access to the trail. It's a. Net benefit to the community. That's why it belongs on the warrant.
Yep.
I vote I.
And George?
I.
I am I as well, I agree with Paul, this is a. Almost a no-brainer. Okay, and the third one, consideration of potential acquisition of real estate pursuant to general law sixty-one B, section nine. Located at thirty-one Hunting Lane.
So moved. To put it on the warrant.
Absolutely, yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, Jeff?
Wait, wait, just a second, I, I think we need to have a discussion on this.
Okay.
We should at least have an explanation what we're doing.
Yes, exactly, thank you.
You did move very quickly, Paul, and I don't know if it's debatable, so yeah.
I, I think we need to discuss, I mean, we had an executive session before, so I just gotta be careful with what we say, but. We have submitted. A letter of, that we are activating our right of first refusal on a property that has been filed to. For a forty B with the Z B A. And it's under sixty-one B, so we said when they filed with Z B A that. It is. Our right to activate our right of first refusal, so we submitted appraisal to. The owner. For nine hundred and fifty thousand, that were activating our right of first refusal, now. Just to point out that we have. Had discussions with Unity Farm and supporters along with them. That. Are. Prepared to. Purchase the, I, I think, we gotta figure out the logistics of how it works, but if the town buys it, then it, then. The Unity Farm and their supporters would then. Take that, or, or purchase it from the town immediately thereafter, or, or. Something like that, like we, we'd have to figure out the exact logistics, but. That's, that's the plan. And we need a vote from the town to say that, yes, we can move forward with purchasing the land. Once we activate our right of first refusal. Hopefully that explains it well, Paul, Jeff, Eric, did, did that kinda summarize it, or did I miss anything?
Did a nice job, George.
Yep, and you danced away from the legal aspects real good, too.
There's some people on here that probably wanna speak as well, I know there's concerns about the. If the town got stuck without, you know, saying, yes, we're gonna buy it, and then we don't have the funds. I wanna, I, I see some of the supporters on here, I don't know, Eric, if you wanna give them a chance to speak.
Okay, if. Could people use the under participants, if you open up that, that window and you see a raise hand function with a little, I think most people see a blue hand. It looks like this, if you could press that, and I'll take people in the order that I see them on the right-hand side. After them, but those people, I'll, I'll find a screen for people who are just violently raising their hand, of which case I'll probably, I, I wind up missing him.
John Halamka's got his hand up.
Actually, it says Kathy Halamka. Yeah, okay.
Clearly, it's John in the picture.
Okay, I can't see it, please go ahead.
Yes, hi, it's John Halamka, I'm here with Kathy, and we are the owners and founders of Unity Farms Sanctuary, the five oh one C three. That is approximate to the land, and through our own finances, through the five oh one C three. And the contributions of others, the payment to the town, nine hundred and fifty thousand. Is something that we as a group have committed to should this transaction proceed.
Okay, if you could unraise your hand too, that'd be great. Okay, is, does anyone else wish to speak about this in the general public? This going around here.
Wanna, you wanna read the article? After. The addition of Chris Patrini's recommendation or?
And Marion also has her hand raised, too.
Oh, that's the one up, Mary, why don't you go ahead?
Alright, just a, a question, you know, as I read the sixty-one. Chapter sixty-one law, the state law. It speaks of, that the town, if it exercises its right, can assign that right to a nonprofit organization. So I'm wondering why you're talking about the town buying it. I mean, why not just assign it to Unity Farm, just for my information, I, I'd like to know how that works.
You want me to try the answer?
Please, Paul.
Yes, please, Paul, absolutely.
You're the lawyer, go ahead.
So, so first, we are gonna change the article that's being proposed to include. Authorizing the Board of Selectmen to assign it to. Unity Farms. But number two. For, in order to go forward. With clarity and assuredly. With regard to. The property owner. Who is fighting this? It is best to have the town. Take the lead. And to. Resolve those issues. Before. It's assigned. To others.
Oh, so I'm, I'm trying to.
Yeah, I'm trying to avoid discussing our, our litigation strategies, but there is the risk of litigation. And, and, and we don't wanna hit up donors with. The issues of. Litigation. So. We felt that the town should go forward with this, and then. Assign it later.
Okay, thanks.
Explains it well, absolutely, now, I have, I think, only the old language in front of me. David mentioned about reading, does anyone have like the modified language recently by council?
Yes, I just, I just wrote it and sent it to Jeff. Jeff?
Oh, great.
It's up. It's an email, and it's in the body of the email.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's see.
Yes.
Might have to move your. Faces around a little bit, is that alright?
Yeah, that's good. To see, do you wanna read it, David?
Yeah, I can. Article to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of nine hundred and fifty thousand and zero dollars. For the purpose of acquiring by purchase the land located at thirty-one Hunting Lane, more particularly described. As twenty-two point nine three of the twenty-four point nine three acres of land shown on the Town of Sherburne Assessor's map eleven. Parcels three B and three C assessed. Valued and taxed pursuant to M G L chapter sixty, sixty-one B. And F Y twenty twenty and earlier for general municipal purposes. And then the addition of the new language is comma, or to lease or resell such property, or to assign the right to purchase said property. And then it continues with the previous language, on such terms and conditions that may be established by the Board of Selectmen, which needs to be changed to select board. And further to authorize the select board to take all necessary and related actions to carry out the purpose of this article. Pass any vote or to take any action relative thereto. Should be a comma after article.
Should I stop the share, is that enough?
Yeah, that's enough.
I think we see the new language in there as well, to lease or assign. Gives us some flexibility in there and to. How to execute this, we have a commitment from the nonprofit, which you can designate to, I think you can, under sixty-one, designate to a nonprofit. And we have that commitment as well.
Eric, Paul Bakikio has his hand up.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
You should have to unmute yourself, Paul, I just, I just clicked on it. There you go.
Sorry, thanks, Jeff. Paul Bakikio, forty-one Hunting Lane. As we know, the, the appraisal. Has an assumption. That there's two building lots. Available. So if there weren't two building lots. Which would have to be sorted out. The price would be some, something less than nine fifty. If there's one building lot, no building lots. How that's gonna be determined, I guess we'll have to figure out. But the town council, take that into consideration and have like a maximum of nine fifty, in case. The price is five hundred or three hundred or something like that.
George, you made it better than me, but from my recollection, and I still always have to be cautious here. The appraiser was not comfortable going below that number based on the highest and best use requirements and what would stand up in court.
Yeah, because the, the developer's saying he can get twenty-eight lots. The appraiser, from my conversation with the appraiser. The overall assumption, based on an extensive search of the soils. And, and looking at the property as a whole, and he didn't just assume you could get two, two lots, he really did a extensive soil study there. And said on that, whatever it was, fourteen acres, there's two clear areas where he thought you could get a septic. And, and that seems more reasonable. To, in a, I guess if you're. Looking at court, then to come in and say. You can't build anything here. So that's, that's one thing. That we, that we talked about.
Yeah, I mean, that's unusual, because. The developer can get twenty-one residences per forty B. Not by right. And I don't have the appraisal in front of me, but I remember it was an extraordinary assumption. Whatever, whatever that means, and I had read that without knowing anything about appraisals. Is that if you couldn't get two building lots, the price would somehow have to be lowered.
So, Paul, can, can I make a comment here?
Please.
Question. Just legally, if we appropriate. Nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we don't have to spend nine hundred and fifty thousand, we can spend any lesser amount. Any lesser amount is automatically included. So we don't need to change the language to say. Up to including or maximum or whatever else. If we can get it for one dollar. We can get it for one dollar, we don't need. To say that the nine hundred and fifty is one dollar.
Well, that was my question, Paul, and you answered it.
I think Craig Mills had a question.
Does he? Okay.
Yeah.
Onto the virtual hand.
He's got a better one.
I, my, my better hand is up. Yeah, I, the only reason that we thought it might make better sense to include a reference to the maximum of nine fifty. Or reference the fact that it may turn out to be lower is really so that. The town, when voting, will understand that it may be substantially less money. And therefore perhaps more likely to pass. Now, I don't know whether there'll be any explanation that's included when the. When the article is written. Or in the, in the book that is sent out to everyone. But I don't have enough experience in Sherburne to know how, how that's done. But it, it may be useful to townspeople simply to understand that it's. It could be substantially less than nine fifty that's actually laid out by the town.
Good, can I respond to that?
Yeah.
The, the problem is, I'm just speaking as a lawyer. The problem is with the word maximum. So let's say we can make a deal at nine sixty, and let's say we have only nine fifty, and. Somebody's willing to donate ten thousand dollars to us. If the voters have said that we can't spend more than nine hundred and fifty. We're stuck. So rather than use the word maximum or anything like that. It's much, much better to go with the standard language. Which have been interpreted by courts for decades. We go with nine fifty. That's understood to be any lesser amount, and it includes our ability. To add to it from other sources, the nine fifty limits, this is the taxpayer. Exposure. We, if we get donations. We're not limited. So I, please, let's just stick with.
That, that's just fine.
Okay, thank you. Elector, Paul Batikio, raises his hand again.
Yeah, thanks, Eric. So if you're gonna put nine fifty in there, and I wanna so go, go back and read the appraisal again, but. You're, you're. You're anticipating. That advisory and the town. By two-thirds vote. Will authorize. Almost a million dollars to buy this property, you think that's. Likely to happen?
I think with the commitment, I think, and George is gonna reach out to some of the key stakeholders here. Afterwards, and get kind of a more in black and white commitment, if I could say that.
Yeah, exactly, John, John, I'm gonna tell you now, I'm gonna be reaching out to you tomorrow, because we need to set up a meeting, so we can, we can chat as, as. As a town, because I think. What's gonna help is if we go to the town with a more formal commitment between now and town meeting, so I wanna start. Those conversations immediately. I just haven't had a chance to reach out to you, because I've been in a meeting since we had our executive session, so. So we'll, we'll, we'll set that up as soon as we can.
If I could just piggyback on that and say that. I, I thought I heard Unity Farms say that they would come up with a. If I could just piggyback on that and say that I I thought I heard Unity Farms say that they would come up with a nine fifty. And if we have that in in the form that George just indicated. The issue for advisory and the voters is this is a zero dollar. Equation for the taxpayers.
Right.
We're asking for authority to spend nine fifty. We have a funding source for nine fifty.
Right. Yep. Part of that raise and appropriate, it may not be from town funds, it may be from other funds.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, um I don't see any more discussion on this item. Is there a motion roll? We may even have a motion on the table, I'm not sure. But either way, is there a is there a motion?
But yeah, Paul made a motion a long time ago and then I opened it up to discussion.
Yeah, an hour ago.
I guess I'll second it if no one already has. I don't know whether we seconded it or not.
And and just to be friendly, maybe modified, I mean, the modified language as presented by the town administrator up on the screen.
Yes, yes.
Correct.
Okay, so all in favor, uh Jeff?
Hi.
Now, Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am I as well.
Can I also make a motion to support this article?
Oh, sure. Sure, uh so moved.
I'll second that, I'll second that motion or whoever's making it.
No, it sounds like, yeah, no, George, uh George moved it and Jeff seconded it. All in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Now, Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am I. Okay, very good. Okay, last one on for our open, our recently open town meeting warrant is consideration of changes to the finance director and town accountant bylaw. In our background material, we have the old language and David, is this modified language from the town administrator bylaw, correct?
There was, yeah, I mean, there's, it's the town administrator bylaw that has existed for three years unchanged, I think.
Two years unchanged.
Yeah, I didn't know what the the changes were.
There are no changes to the town administrator bylaw. It was only added in case you wanted to see finance director and town administrator side by side.
But I I didn't see what the changes were for on the uh finance director side either.
That's what you're here to uh resolve if you want any changes to the finance director. But I wasn't proposing any.
Okay.
I just wanted to put the article on.
So I mean, you and I have had conversations, David, where you wanted the effectiveness of a um. Any town accountant answering to the board of selectmen versus town administrator. I think there was some past discussions about the being just independent to those. I think that's been one of the um, the uh focal points of changing this. So we change it now. I don't know if I have specifics to change it now, but. Is there any discussion among the board about that aspect about um where the CFO, essentially, or finance director reports to? Does it report to a board? Does it report to town administrator or or maybe treasurer collector? I don't know, you know, is there, is there any? No, I wouldn't do that, but I'm just kind of opening that up for discussion.
So I think we've had this discussion and we had a variety of different views and. We, I think we heard Jeff's views and I, my view is to leave it the way it is. That's the way I've seen it work in many communities. It works well. It provides uh very healthy. Checks and balances. Right now, we have essentially three people who report to us, the town council. The finance director and the town administrator. Three isn't a very large number. I think it should stay the way it is.
Okay.
And and I've made my opinion clear. I think it should actually change. I think. The CEO and typically in a corporate environment, the CEO oversees like their, I I think what I would envision. Is the town administrator as a CEO overseeing the finance department, the police department, fire department and DPW. And the head of the finance department should be reporting to somebody who's there day to day and not just a volunteer board.
Yeah, I see that point. And Jeffrey, remind me, I was like this.
I concur with Paul on this, although I I respect what George is saying too. I think. Maybe it's a distinction between what's a reporting relationship versus what's a day to day supervisory role. I don't think um just because the person reports ultimately to the select board doesn't mean that they aren't. Managed by the town administrator. Um, you know, if there was some conflict, then we would have to maybe step in, but. I still, I know we're a volunteer board. I still view us as being able to have David. As he does many things that we vote on, he causes them to happen, you know, so I sort of view it as. An implementation versus a reporting relationship. So I I would respect Paul's experience with a lot of towns and. Support what he recommends.
Yeah, Paul, you would raise your hand.
Yeah, the the current language does require coordination with the town administrator. So Jeff's point is well taken. It's already there. But the other point I'd make is that we have a government study committee and they're an excellent committee. They've suggested a lot of good changes in the town. And if we don't have this coming from them. So if there's a desire to do something here, I think it should be sent to the government study committee, see what they think. Rather than are trying to do something on the run. Now, the third point would be, we have nothing definitive in front of us. They actually vote on, there's no article, there's no text. And I do believe we should close the warrant today because with the advisory hearing is coming up on the tenth. We need to have a warrant for them to actually handle.
Yeah, I agree with you. It's unfortunate because this is not between time where the staff is changing. So it actually would be ideal to, you know, a new hire to essentially have a revised bylaw to answer to to review to, you know. Recruit under and so on like that. But you are right, Eric. Um, we definitely can't just roll up our sleeves and. Changes Texas has been vetted over the years in just a night or two or even between meetings. So unless we have something specific, I I don't think we're ready to put this before on the warrant, unless I feel strongly differently. So is there a motion relative to this, to put this on or to not put this on the warrant? I take no action. I guess we take no action.
I just, I just, I don't think we need to, I think it's. You've made a motion to put something on the warrant. It's not gonna pass, so I think that's not waste our time, I think.
So I'll move to.
Well, I think I think Paul has a good suggestion that the governance task force should look into this as soon as possible.
Yeah, yeah, I like that idea. Yeah.
Close the warrant?
But David just raised his hand. Is it administrative to this or is it anything?
Yeah, it's about this article. I was just going to say that um there are things that we need to discuss further uh for corrections, not just with the board. But that this will come back to the board at some point to um have some recommended revisions to it.
Good. Okay, maybe work with the governance com- uh committee on that. I think I think I'd like to see something from them. I agree with that. Okay, uh Paul, you had made a motion to close the warrant.
Yes.
Okay, um, is there a second on that?
I guess I'm wondering, are there other articles? Do we need to bring the warrant up? Are there other articles that we were questioning or? I can't remember, and there was a couple.
There's anything.
Yeah.
I think the warrant was pretty much set.
Okay.
If it's not on the agenda, it'd be difficult to bring it up now.
No, I mean, the the agenda included the warrant and we got a draft warrant. I could bring it up if you want to look at it.
Oh, yeah. No, you're right. It did include it.
But I I'm fine if I, I I can't think of anything off the top of my head. David, is there anything I'm not?
No, we we isolated what the things were that you had to hit tonight.
Okay.
We talked everything that's, I have my thing that's in red, which we unresolved, we did discuss tonight.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good with it.
So is there a second to close the warrant?
I'll second.
Okay, move up Paul, second by Jeff. All in favor, Jeff?
Alright.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Now I am I as well. All right, um, so what's sixty then mean? Consideration of voting and signing uh twenty one annual more? Is this, we vote as a whole or um?
Yes, I moved to adopt the warrant as amended by tonight's votes.
Second.
All right, very good. Um, on favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am I as well. Okay.
I think Dave, I think David can sign it on our behalf. Is that right, David?
Yeah, I'll resolve the 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 uh language tomorrow and run it by council and we'll have it out with the signatures on it tomorrow.
Perfect.
The important thing is to give it to advisory.
Yes.
I mean, I I I think a number of us on the board have served on advisory, including me. And nothing is worse than having a public hearing, go through a warrant where you think you got twenty articles. And then a week later, the board issues a warrant with forty articles, twenty, which you've never seen.
I've already, I've already gotten an email from Stephen Seid tonight, so um about about the article and Hunting Lane is completely new to them, so they have to have a meeting. Week, so I'm.
We we knew that.
And 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 tell them kind of what, why we're doing this last minute. Because I know the last thing advisory ever wants to see is a last minute warrant.
But it is coming before the public here. That's why I want to get the warrant issued now, so they have time to set it up for the public here.
Exactly. They, the same documents that went in your packet went out to them, so.
Okay.
It's just the changes tonight that need to be solidified and sent to them.
Okay.
So the, on that note, I would like to bring this up then, so um uh the email went to you and me, George. He's looking for an emergency meeting. Advisory should be as. Uh, we don't need a quorum of the select board at that. I think maybe just like one or two of us.
I'll, I'm happy to go because I think I'm been most involved with the Hunting Lane. I think that's their biggest concern and I'm happy to go and represent the board at that meeting.
Okay, if there's a second, I may join as well if I can do a second, but we'll see how that works out. Okay.
Yeah, and I think they also wanted, I don't think he's still on here, John Halanka, I'm gonna talk, when I talk to him. To set up a meeting, I'll see if he's available to go that night as well.
Okay, very good.
We also made some somewhat significant changes to the the turf fields, you know, tonight with the lighting and other issues.
Hey.
You may want to just sort of update them so they're not caught caught off guard on Saturday.
I'd like to see the language in there, just to see the final language in that.
I'll send that out. Um, I may have it done tonight.
Okay, okay, very good. Okay, so all being said, uh, agenda number seven, uh, about the twenty twenty one annual town meeting, consideration and vote of ballot questions. For the annual town election.
Eric, before you get into that, I, we're talking about town meeting, a concern that I want to bring up. I think there's some issues that a lot of townspeople are gonna be concerned about and it's gonna, I'm I'm. Have a feeling town meeting is going to be much more highly attended this year than last year. And I'm concerned about the capacity at garage. I don't want to set a town meeting. And more people show up than we have capacity for and we have to cancel it.
Yeah, it's a very.
Capacity last year was with the spacing we had was a hundred and sixty.
Right, and I have, and we may have more people than that because there's a lot of supporters of the turf field and there's also. The Hunting Lane residents that are all gonna be there to support that article. Like, I I I'm very concerned that there's gonna be a capacity issue.
I agree. Those two are gonna be, um, you know, we didn't have anything like that at the last town meeting. That's a very good point. Um.
So is is Jackie on here?
She was earlier.
Yes, I am.
There, there she is.
And or Mary.
Daryl has her hand up.
Oh, there you go, Daryl, please chime in.
Okay, that's actually something that we discussed at our COVID team meeting. When whenever that was, oh, this morning. So is that, yes, if. Last year, we had talked about the need to have a plan for what would be done if more people showed up. Then we could accommodate and we never got to the end point on that because it was assumed based on a survey done that that would not happen, but. For the reasons that George said, that's exactly what we talked about this morning is that there are tantalizing. Items on the agenda, so on for the meeting. And I think we need plan for that, and that's why I said we need to be flexible. We need to be looking ahead. Things are not clearing up. So.
One location, just to consider again, I know we didn't, last year it was a concern to do it on the fee, on the turf field at. Um Dover Sherburne because it was, it was in August and there was a heat concern, but this is in May, which is a lot different than August. I know it's outdoors, so we have a weather concern, but there is a lot more capacity for more people in an open air environment.
And and it'll be on a turf field, so if it does get hot, that'll affect it. That is a good point.
Turf field is available.
Yeah, that's that's a question. Jackie has her hand up, so does Sean.
Okay, I'll see.
We had also talked about doing it at Jameson Field and then using. Possibly some video feed into rooms in Pine Hill School if there were people who could not be outside for whatever reason. Or needed some other accommodations.
And just before I take, before I recognize anyone else, so that's still in discussion, uh, the setting and the setting where this goes. It's happening and that's being discussed between um the COVID committee and uh and is Jackie and Mary involved with these conversations?
I think Jackie already has stuff booked, so I think we need to.
Well, she has her hand raised, her, she nice has a virtual hand raised, so let me recognize her. Jackie, please, um, go ahead.
So Mary Wolf and I have been discussing that we are concerned that there could be a lot of people based on what's on on the warrant articles. We are planning on doing the survey again to see how many people are going to be coming, you know, we'll be advertising it, et cetera. The problem with having it at the high school field is that we will not be able to do video. You cannot do. A screen at the high school field. So if you do it outside, even at Jameson or whatever. People will not be able to do presentations on on video. It's not possible. You can't see the screen during the daylight.
God imagine.
And I'm not sure what Daryl just mentioned about doing feeds into Pine Hill. I'm I'm not sure that that's workable. Like, I'd I'd have to speak to the video people, but. From Jameson all the way into Pine Hill, I'm not, that seems, but I'm not sure that that's workable. So.
What could I suggest?
I'm hoping that by May fifteenth, that maybe people can sit three feet apart. I don't, I don't know, instead of the six feet. But I mean, I I have planned um the same exact setup last year in terms of the tent. Um, and uh it was, we were very lucky to get a tent this year, and I think because. I rented from the same company last year. They got permission from the owner to to give me the tent because. Um, there's a lot more uh demand for tents this year because people are starting to have weddings and everything again and and activities again. So I feel very lucky that we were able to reserve a tent.
Good.
So.
Was I right, Jackie? Was it around a hundred and sixty with our six foot spacing?
Yeah, so I have like a hundred and seventy five chairs ordered. Um, we didn't use that many, but I think we set up about a hundred chairs inside. Um, I don't know, it might have been one forty, but I have a hundred and seventy five chairs on order. And then we we discussed this last year with Sean as that, you know, people might just have to be sitting outside the tent. Or outside the, in the, in the parking lot area. And we'll have, and Mary and I have discussed, we'll have to get extra tellers. Um, you know, we'll, if we're, I'm assuming that probably a lot of these votes that we're talking about are gonna wanna be secret. Uh, secret ballots, so we might need extra tellers to help, um, you know, with counts, et cetera. Because Mary's not gonna be able to see everyone, um, you know, from the podium if people are sitting outside of the garage. And outside of the tent area.
Yeah, let's look at market capacity.
Sorry?
I was just asking real quick, will the the electronic clickers work? It'll still back to be ballots, you think?
Yeah, we could look into that. If you guys, if the Board of Health and you guys are okay with, you know, having someone come out from Ohio. To manage, you know, the um. The the computer and the and the machine. I mean, we don't have anyone to do that.
I never thought about the travel of Ohio, but just the nature of just like non-contact and everything else, the clicker seemed to make sense just on a, the nature of the actual thing, but again. Part of the COVID committee in that.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could, I could look into that, but I mean, last year I canceled them because. Um, of Governor Baker's, you know, travel restrictions and also I didn't feel comfortable bringing in someone from Ohio. And it's just made me very uncomfortable, so I canceled them.
I wonder, oh, can I add one point or do you want?
Then I do want to see, I recognize George and then Sean, so do yours.
I I don't need to be recognized. I know Sean had his hand up. Daryl has.
And Jackie does again. I was just gonna suggest that, you know. I think maybe Mary Wolf could add value here too, which is, I'm wondering, because she can, you know, make consent more. She's bundling things, I think, some of this, so I'm sort of wondering, what if we did the turf fields in the uh Hunting Lane first? Because then we probably would lose a hundred and twenty people half hour after that end or fifteen minutes after that end, so.
You know what's funny? My strategy normally is to put those last, but I know, because I want people to be engaged, but maybe this case it's different.
Well, but the the only reason for doing the opposite is because then they could leave and we, you know, we could almost have like a. Well, but the the only reason for doing the opposite, because then they could leave and we, you know, we could almost have like a building fifteen minute gap where we cover those two issues. And then people blow out of there and we have the rest, you know, the um, all the other.
And get to all their soccer games.
We still have to tell twenty people to stay, because that's our core, but other than that, we're okay.
Cause normally I like to actually force public participation, I think it's so important, but maybe it's the COVID, maybe it's just a different world now, that's all.
Maybe, I don't know, but let's see what Daryl and Mary say.
Well, I do want to recognize Sean, he had to stand up quite a bit, and then I'm gonna recognize Daryl right after that, and then Mary.
First thing I'm gonna say is if you start with uh, the turf fields, you gotta put Pine Hill, because it's the same crowd. Um, but more importantly, what I wanted to point out was, we had, we had far more capacity than a hundred people. At the DPW, because we had both sides of the building that were almost completely unused, one was under tent, one was not. And the difference between playing around with being out on a field. If if we were to go down to Laurel or go to any one of the other fields, you're gonna start with. The uncontrolled chaos of not being able to set the sound system up the night or the day before. And no real good screens because of the sun. At at DPW, we could have a rainstorm the night before, we can still set the sound system up, we can set the direct link to cable TV, we can have all the cameras in place. And if it's nice out, a hundred and fifty people can stand in the parking lot if they want and stay socially distanced, but. You can't do that in a field, it's gonna be chaos. This isn't last year, this isn't, you know, minimize town meeting as much as possible, this is a real town meeting. And we need to take it seriously, people need to sit down and take it seriously. If a crowd shows up at the tail end to to vote on a couple things, so be it. We gotta accommodate them coming in, we had over a hundred and thirty parking spaces in and around. The highway garage, we had enough to accommodate a crowd and we still can, and and. I I don't think now is the time to start changing it, it's already been advertised and it's gonna be there. Um, and a significant amount of money has been already allocated to it.
Sean, one question on that, just on the parking, um, you said there's a hundred and thirty there, would you have, would. If you were anticipating like do a survey and there's two hundred people coming, where would you do overflow parking at Pine Hill?
Yeah, we had that in last year's plan and there was, uh, uh, I don't know if anyone remembers, but we had a significant. Police presence that was gonna then span out and direct the traffic up to Pine Hill. Um, and then they would have walked down Elliot Street to get there. So so that would be the plan, I think it was Pine Hill would be the first overflow and then down North Main. And try to keep people from parking on Elliot Street like they used to do for the the Pine Hill overflow, but. Um.
You're also.
We didn't exceed the parking lot at town at at the highway garage last year.
You're you're assuming that there's one person per car, but in fact, uh, my wife and I drove together in the same car.
Yeah, we kept track of that, actually.
So certainly.
And I.
Probably people are going to, a a lot of people are gonna come in in twos and maybe threes.
Hopefully certainly.
And and if they park at Pine Hill, they have to walk on the access road to gauge the article on the way there.
Yeah, I know, maybe. Okay, I would like to recognize, uh, Daryl next, please.
Okay, so on the clickers. Given that it hasn't been shown that transmission is tied to fomites very much, fomites being things touched that have infectious materials. On them, I would say that that is a lesser risk. And can be addressed by having hand sanitizer available or, because people aren't going to be passing a lot. Uh, now, might be different for the people collecting and then counting uh, votes and things like that. But again, hand sanitizer will take care of that, people could wear gloves if they're more comfortable, but. Just remember that a glove surface is the same as your skin surface, so you still don't want to touch your eyes after. You've been handling something else uh, with a glove on, any more than you would with bare skin. Um. Last year, Zach and I talked about fans that the fire department has. We may want to boost the ventilation through the building if there's not a good cross breeze for anyone who saw me. Going around doing testing prior to uh, town meeting last year, holding up a ribbon, you can see that. You would never guess what the airflow patterns are in there. Um, I could move the ribbon one foot away and it the wind would be blowing one way and then a foot away, it'd be blowing the opposite direction. And another foot away, it would be completely still, so uh, we might have to enhance it, and that was a windy day, so. Um, and then the other issue that I'm sure I'll be skewered again, um, masks. There are more mandates this year statewide in terms of wearing masks and around the country in different circumstances. And maybe that is something that has to be firmed up because. Again, the case numbers are going up, it's going up for some reason, I did find the CDC. Article that they're a little looser, they're. Doesn't completely prevent, but it really is, the mRNA vaccines are quite good. I tend to read a lot of global stuff, other countries are not yet convinced of that, but. Uh, I would say that the data looks very encouraging, but not everybody's going to be vaccinated. Um, and there are still the percentage of people who can become infected even after vaccination and whatever, so even if we had a hundred percent vaccinated. Masks are a good idea. And whether we make it mandatory is something to seriously consider.
And here's a question, Daryl, um. How much concern is there um, for the for the clickers of if they have to send a representative from Ohio out with these clickers to um, to run the operation?
Uh, if that, if that person's been vaccinated and wears a mask, then I would say low. If they haven't been vaccinated, wearing a mask is usually quite good. Not wearing a bad mask and not vaccinated, not good, um, but it's more a risk to that person for their flight and their travel.
Okay.
Then to us, I would say.
Cause I would say COVID notwithstanding, I always liked the clickers, to be honest with you, it's something I supported initially when they originally voted on it. It makes time meeting go on quite a bit quicker, it makes better documentation. Um, back when Framing had town meeting, they used them all the time and it's just in general something I support rather than the. The hand go pick up those things, I don't know if anyone remembers the special town meeting we did for um, Coolidge Corner there. But it's like, you know, there were miscounts and everything else like that, and this in general.
I thought you were concerned about not being able to get clickers, so I was trying to allay concerns about that.
Yeah, I'm just know, because it sounded to me like there was a balance between some risk involving this person's travel. And the risk of handling it, and it sounds like both of them can be managed or marginalized to some fashion, it's that's how that's how I.
I would say so.
Okay, uh, next up, I'd like to hear from my Mary Wolf, please.
Okay, so um, some time ago, someone mentioned combining articles into a consent agenda. And um, I fully intend to do that, um, my goal would be to combine articles one through seven. Into one and eleven through thirteen into another, everything else I think really needs to stand on its own. Um, as far as uh, Jackie, you know, said it very well, we've had, she and I have had a lot of conversations about this. Um, the one thing about the um. Clickers, if we do have to bring somebody in from out of state, it's unclear. Um, what the quarantining situation is in Massachusetts, so if. You know, if they come from New Hampshire, I guess it's good now, I I forget exactly, but if they're coming from Ohio. They may have to quarantine for two weeks, we're not paying for two weeks of quarantining someone, I'm sure, so. Um, we'd have to look into that, that would, that would be another consideration, we are going to do the survey again. So we should have some idea, um, I'm glad to hear what Sean had to say about the hundred and thirty. Parking spaces, because to me, each one of those, you know, represents a possible other chair, you know, if if we need. To expand for people, so you know, that's.
On on the quarantine thing, Mary, one thing, as Daryl said, hopefully, if you could work with the company and get somebody who's vaccinated, that's willing to come out here. I think from what I've seen with the travel restrictions, it's either you quarantine, you have a negative test, or you've been vaccinated. Correct, wrong, and Daryl or Jeff, I know you guys probably know more about it, but I have seen that as if you're fully vaccinated, that the quarantine isn't necessary.
So that may not be an issue, but it, you know, I I wanted to uh, to raise it. But sure, I mean, you know, the money is there in the budget, so.
And hopefully if you can't get the clickers, not in the world, it's something I just, I like.
I agree with you, Eric.
Yeah.
I, you know, personally, but.
Yeah, and I think the long term. Go, Paul?
I think there's a general consensus in agreement with you, Eric, I I agree that clickers ought to be there. I think I just heard uh, George say that he wanted clickers. Yeah, so I think if we took a vote, you'd have a vote from the board requesting that there be clickers if it can be done.
Yeah, as long as you manage the risk, that's what it's all about, you know, and some say I'll also defer to COVID team, if you can't manage the risk, the balance isn't there, then we just don't do it. I'm not married to the idea, I'm just kind of dating it, all right, um. So Mary, um, are you done, Mary, I recognize Jackie next?
Uh, yeah, I ju- just as far as the uh, we will have to make sure that um, the clickers, if people are spread. Out, you know, of the garage, depending on the walls and that kind of thing, we just want to make sure, we'll just have to make sure that. Um, the clickers can communicate with the with the home station there, so.
M- Mary, before Mary goes, I think there was one other question, I know, I can't remember whether Jeffrey or Eric asked it. About if you could change the order, so the ones that you're gonna have a ton of people voting on could be at the front of the warrant, is that something we would consider?
I I have no objection to that at all, I, you know, I I don't have, I have no opinion on that, I'm just. I want to combine the articles that I said into a consent agenda, because I think it will move the meeting along. Most quickly.
Okay.
When the other articles are, that's kind of, you know. I'm also willing to do um, another pre-town meeting Zoom for people if they're interested. Um, I don't know, to be honest with you, that um, that had a lot of people not speaking. Um, at the meeting itself last year, you know, the general hope was that people would speak and get their. You know, questions answered prior to the meeting, I'm I'm not sure that was a raging success in that aspect of it, but whatever.
I definitely am now thinking that order is a good idea, because you know, if people, some people may, if we get, say we get two hundred and. Fifty people have to stand, if they're only standing for half an hour or forty minutes for the two articles, then they can leave instead of. Standing for the whole meeting.
As Sean said, there's the third article, the Pine Hill access road.
Yeah. True.
I'm looking at the order right now, is that something that has to vote in the warrant, or is that something like the the moderator, we can just change the order on this?
I.
Wait, oh, sorry, Mary.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can request that, um, you know, the, it says that the. Articles will be taken in the order of the warrant, um. I or someone can request that an article be taken out of order, but uh, people vote on that, so.
But we could, could we change the order ourselves before?
If you really, you write the warrant, so if you write it in a certain order, that's the order that it is, so. You know, the the easiest thing to do would be to write the articles in the order that you want to take them.
Okay.
We just voted the last, the last item, in fact, we're kind of an extension on on six C here about voting and signing the twenty twenty and twenty um. Warrant, and we have the order right here in front of us.
Jackie has her hand raised and Sean has his hand raised.
And Daryl does too.
Yeah, and I'll see, I'll.
I think Daryl's finished, you're finished, aren't you, Daryl?
No, she she re- re-raised.
Oh, really?
Yeah, she she talked, she turned it off and re-raised it again, I'm still gonna do it. If Jackie could go next, please.
Okay, so I I just wanted to clarify a couple things, so I have already spoken to Dave Bento, Chief Bento, about. The additional police presence, which we did have last year to help with the, like Sean said. We have a plan already in place um, for the extra parking and and et cetera. In terms of Turner Technologies, I will call them um, either tomorrow or next week. And try to find out more information about it, the signals are two hundred and fifty feet radius. So I had already spoken to them last year about how big, um. You know, the DPW garage was and everything, so they don't work on wifi. They work on like some kind of infrared signal and it's two hundred and fifty feet radius. So um, there was something else I wanted to mention, but of course, I've gone out of my head, I have no idea what it was, so.
Raise your hand again when you think of it.
But basically, I will double check on on the clickers, it isn't, they are, it is in my budget. So we should be able to, I, we should, we should be able to cover it, there it's, it's the other stuff that's not in my budget. Like the video and everything else, so, but the clickers are a part of my budget.
Okay, very good, uh, Daryl, you're up again.
You're muted.
Okay, so, um, alright. Alright, sorry, I have to get my thoughts in order, oh, on the uh, the person traveling, so right there, and all of the current. Guidelines are of course subject to change, so we always have to be ready for that, but the more of these bases that we could cover might make it easier to get somebody here. So certainly, there's um, negative COVID tests, there's having been fully vaccinated. There are people who are in Massachusetts for less than twenty four hours, that's an option, fly in. Night before, get out before twenty four hours is up. Um, and there's also some sort of special category for essential workers. And I'm not sure if it would extend to this, but that would be another consideration, so maybe. Uh, you know, Jackie, I guess as many of those qualities that you could hit for whatever person they might send out would be great. And make it easier, probably.
Okay, very good, and then, uh, lastly, uh, Sean.
Um. I might have got lost in my point, so to the point of changing the order of the articles, I I was just gonna make a point that. The um, there's a couple things, one, it it's extremely disruptive when a couple hundred people leave town meeting. In a normal town meeting, when it's at Lincoln Commons or Mudge Auditorium, sorry. Maybe I'm showing my age.
Yeah.
It's it's still called both, Lincoln Commons is a building, Mudge Auditoriums, though.
Got it, so I mean, we've all seen, at least most of us have seen the mass exodus when a hundred and fifty people walk out of there. It shuts town meeting down. Um. When it's there, it's difficult to get three or four hundred people in a town meeting and start on time. Usually town meeting starts as soon as a quorum starts, uh, which is. And that's at night, I I, on a Saturday morning, I I think it's advantageous to just leave it alone. Do the business of the town as as you normally would, people are gonna get tech, there's gonna be text messages or next door messages, hey, we're an hour out. And uh, you know, the poor people that have to check everyone in, so be it, it's it's somewhat slow going. It's not too bad, because they have the electronic scanners on to check people in, they'll be doing it all morning to get people in. If it's standing room only, it's standing room only, um, I I I don't, I wouldn't go disrupting the town's business. And financial business to accommodate one or two articles, I I really hope you guys don't do that. Um, and and I think it might do more damage than good, because trying to get a hundred and fifty cars out of the highway garage. Because everyone's checking out halfway through town meeting, it's just gonna shut town meeting down anywhere, we're gonna be there all afternoon. That was my point, and the clickers, I think, were an absolute no-go in the middle of a ball field on a rainy day. Um, but they're they're much easier to set up at the at the highway garage. Uh, maybe we can even avoid a guy flying out, because there's some pretty smart sophisticated people around here setting the rest of the. AV stuff up, maybe we can get them to work without somebody flying out here.
Well, you know, my thoughts, if COVID didn't exist, I actually put, I speckled throughout and put one at the end, the controversial, because I like kind of the forced public participation with it. But this is a, this is a different era right now, and so, I mean, I don't know if the board wants to discuss it, because I guess we control the order of it. I can go either way, I I definitely see Sean's point, I'm not super sold on early or late, but I'll go with the board's thoughts on this.
Sean convinced me to back down, I think he made a good point.
I I would disagree, I I do like the idea of putting them at one end, just so we could get it done, but. Uh, but if the rest of the board, I'll go along with whatever the the board um, agrees to. If we've already voted on it and and there's not a majority that wants to change it, let's leave it alone.
And right now, there's speckled, so turf fields are number eight, um, Pine Hill is kind of. Pine Hill is kind of toward the, ten is the capital, is kind of toward the end of the capital. And then the end of the entire agenda is our thirty-one hunting lane. It's really speckled throughout. It really is. In fact, it's pretty evenly placed.
That may spread out to people, actually, because the people interested in the turf fields will leave in time for the hunting lane people to come in, so.
Yeah.
We may have to think, though, if people are coming and then leaving, how we come, you know, if the cars are, you know, valet parked out there or something, we may have to almost ask people, are you here for the whole thing or not, you know? You're just catching a matinee or what are you doing?
It's true, you never know. I will say a trickle is different than mass. I've seen what Sean's talked about. When a hundred and fifty people all leave at once, it's just, it's done. Just go get something to drink or whatever, you know what I mean? It's just.
We'll just get a food truck and put it outside and go over there for a half hour.
I, I will say real quick, though, I worry that people who all leave might congregate and make their own little super spreader right outside of DPW, you know?
Yeah, I know, I know.
Chatting with each other. Um, yeah, Mary, go ahead.
Can you unmute here to me?
One question I did have about one article when I was looking through the warrant was the, um, I noticed it had been placed, um, between what is normally the, you know, everyday business consent agenda and the omnibus. And I, you know, I, I sort of wondered why that was because it's, it's sort of more like a, a capital expenditure. And, you know, if you're thinking, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but it, if people are used to a certain sort of rhythm and we do the consent agenda, one through seven or eight there, I wrote it down, I forget which, one through seven, and then, um, we have, then there's the, um, the turf article, and then we go to the omnibus and then we go to the, um, capital articles. So, you know, I don't know whether it, again, it doesn't really matter to me, but with the the rhythm of the meeting, it might be better following the, uh, omnibus than preceding it.
That makes sense to me.
I, I'm not, I can't pull up the word right in front of me. Which article again, Mary, did you say?
Yeah, the turf.
The turf? That makes probably more sense to be after the omnibus.
I, I think it would.
Because it kind of goes along with capital.
It does.
Exactly.
It does.
You could move it right after capital.
Yeah.
Nine.
Switch, yeah, switch eight, switch that with the omnibus. You do the omnibus and then you go to the turf field, then you go to the other capital articles.
Does that require, uh, do we have to, uh, we're, we're technically still on agenda item number six B, which is that consideration of voting and signing, even though we did vote on it, whatever else. Would this be, be a revote of, uh, that agenda item sixteen?
Yeah, can I make an amendment to that we switch articles eight and nine?
While we're doing it, do you want to tweak anything else? Hunting Lane is toward the end. No, maybe not.
That's good.
There you go. Hopefully. I'm blaming Sean as a super spreader, though. Okay, um.
I'll second George's, if we need, if we need to vote, I'll second George's motion. It seems like we're not really changing the article, just the order, but.
Just the order.
Yeah, that's it, but sign of the budget. Okay, it sounds like we have a motion, a second to swap number eight and number nine. Uh, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Okay. I think that should close up, uh, number six. I think we've, um, spoken about this quite readily, and there are concerns on town meeting. But it sounds like we do also have a plan ahead, and I like Mary's idea of having the, uh, trial time, town meeting as well and a survey. Again, I do what kind of numbers we're talking about, because this is gonna be a hotter town meeting than last year, no question about it. Um, are we ready to talk about agenda item number seven?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Are there any comments about the, uh, the ballot, uh, ballot questions that's presented to you in the, um, in the background material?
Yes.
Yeah, Paul, go ahead.
So it's always been the practice of every board I've been on. We vote these questions after the advisory hearing, not before. And we vote them because we want the benefit of what advisory has to say. And if they want to go forward with an article and fund it with a ballot, that exclusion, we put it on at their request.
Okay.
The timing, I think there's a mistake made in the timing that we actually have until my count, till May sixth, to decide on the ballot questions. I think the count is off by thirty days. As far as I know, the law says thirty-five days before the election. Didn't we set the election for June fifteenth? That makes the time for ballot questions to be May sixth. Unless there's something I'm not aware of. So I think we should not act on these tonight, but should wait till after the advisory hearing. And after the advisory hearing, follow the thinking of advisory and where they want to do free cash. Don't do a ballot question, where they decided that they're gonna fund with, uh, debt. Follow and put it on at their request.
I'm not an expert in the timing of these things, but I will say it makes sense to do after advisory, that what you just said. Yep. Okay, Jackie, go ahead.
Okay, um, sorry about that. I was texting Mary Wolf about the Turner Technology. So I just wanted to make sure, Paul, are you, you're questioning the April sixth date?
Yes.
Okay, so it is absolutely April sixth and the problem, the problem with it, and I did check with town council. The reason that it is April sixth is because the Mass General Law, as you know, calls for thirty-five days before the election. And because the Sherwin bylaw states that our annual town election is always the second Tuesday in May, we are stuck with the April sixth date. So it goes that thirty-five days goes is always based on the original, um, annual town election date of the second week in May. Even if the, if we move it. So that's.
There's a statute that allows that date to move, notwithstanding any law to the contrary or any bylaw to the contrary. It's one of the things that was done last year. That's why we're able to have elections where there being.
It was still, the, the questions were still due, were still, had to be due to me last year, but I believe it was April seventh last year.
So.
I don't agree.
The ruling from town council, because I actually double checked, because I wanted to make sure that, um, I, I just wanted to double check everything, because last year was a little bit different. Because, um, you know, we had advisory, well, a lot of the stuff was done earlier last year.
Jackie, can you just send that to me and I'll distribute it?
So we have a town council, I'm gonna defer to the town council. It just seems wrong to put any ballot question on that is not gonna be funded by debt.
I, I agree. We had the same discussion last year, that we ended up having to do this early. I had, uh, earlier than we should, because we should be waiting until we know. But we're not gonna have that from advisory until after their public hearing. And unfortunately, we have to vote on ballot questions before that.
So what's the drop dead date for ballot questions? The sixth? April sixth? I was just wondering if we could actually literally vote the day of the advisory meeting. We have a co-meeting with them on the tenth, but that doesn't sound like them. No.
Do next Tuesday, the ballot questions. And it, you know, it doesn't mean, if you, if you put the ballot questions, remember, everything has to pass at town meeting. And then it also has to pass at, it also has to pass at the, um, at the election. So a lot of, most of the time, um, we haven't even had town meeting yet. You know, before, I mean, sorry, I'm probably not explaining this very well, but we don't even know if the ballot questions are gonna pass at town meeting before we go to the election. So, I mean, it's, they, they have to pass. If, if one of them is no, then it is no. So it doesn't really matter. You can put whatever you want at the ballot questions. They have to pass at both town meeting and the election in order to move forward.
So let me ask one what-if question, and people know I hate what-if questions, but this is something that might be realistic. If advisory says, okay, use free cash for this one, and use the free cash, and it passes, it passes. And then it goes to the ballot, because it's on the ballot, so we determined it, and they say, no, you don't have the authorization of bond. It doesn't matter, we still do the project, right? Because it's, it's free cash. If it gets put down, it's almost like, it's almost like a lame duck ballot question.
Correct.
I was gonna add on to that. I think Heidi's still on here. She can fix everything I missed state, but we've gotten away from using free cash, because as, as we, as we like to say in advisory, it's not free and it's not cash. As George can back me up on that, it's really retained earnings. And so, um, what's happened is, we used to try to fund small items with free cash and the large items we would bond, but now she's really bundling projects, so you can bundle, you wouldn't do like a twenty thousand dollar project probably, but she's now bundling for bonding multiple projects in one. So we really, um, tried to get away from using free cash, because the cash was then not available to start spending July first, if it wasn't in the bank. So, um, I think that's a problem. So you fix, fix me now, Heidi.
Well, you have it, you have a pretty, you've said it pretty well, and I think Jane is on it. I don't know if Steve size on it for advisory. But of the items on the cap, that are listed for capital right now, the only one that they're considering free cash is the fire command vehicle, because there's a chance of putting the sale of a vehicle against it, so it does not make sense to bond when we don't know how much we're gonna actually get, and that's kind of a small amount of money. They're leaning to bonding everything else because of the interest rates. So what I've put on here, I bundled the DPW items together, equipment together, and then have a separate one for, um, the road management and could not bundle more items, because they're separate. But essentially, these were all gonna be bondable items.
Okay, that's good.
What about the, one, one question on that? What about the architectural study for the senior center? Because that seems like a low dollar amount item.
The, the feedback I had was the only one that so far, except that, you know, could, that could come off, and again, that could be a lame duck ballot question. So I put it on here, because we don't have any other direction to say they definitely want to use free cash for it.
Steven or Jane, I see you're both on here. Do you have any, Steve just raised his hand.
Steve raises his hand. Yeah, go ahead, Steve. Steve, you're on. Steve Si.
We can't unmute him? No, he's unmuted.
He's unmuted. We just can't hear him.
While waiting for him to speak, I will say, it sounds like this resolves. Sounds like we have no choice but to vote for this, um, ballot. Or like moderately, if we have any modifications to it, although it's not ideal. It sounds like there's minimum, maybe one or two items that may or may not go to free cash on it. If it does go to free cash, it just becomes what I'm calling a lame duck item. I don't know if we want to really beat this up a whole lot more, just simply like, you know, do what we have to do, essentially.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, yes, what Heidi said was correct. Essentially, the, uh, fire chief's command vehicle is the only one that we're considering for free cash, because of the reason that she stated. And the architectural study, I think we are viewing that uh, similar to the Pine Hill Engineering Study last year as, uh, sort of being step one in a larger, you know, potentially larger project. So, um, it qualifies, and I think, uh, as Heidi said, we are trying to get away from using free cash, um, if at all possible.
Makes sense. Thanks, Stephen.
Can I ask him a question?
Yeah, go, Paul.
So you are recommending that we put these ballot questions on the ballot, right?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, doesn't seem like we have a choice, to be honest with you.
He was asking Steven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I, I think, uh, as far as I can tell, advisory's position would be, yes, you should put um, everything onto the ballot. Um, I think it's the, the police command vehicle, I guess, is up in the air, um, and maybe, uh, just for the, 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 the safety net, it might make most sense to also put that on the ballot, um, but I, I would leave that decision up to you guys.
Steve, did you just misspeak? You mean the fire command vehicle, not police, right?
Yeah, sorry, the fire command vehicle.
Yep.
Okay, just to be clear, it's been my position to support no, put no questions on the ballot unless requested to do so. Because each one of them raises the taxes, and I feel incumbent as a select board member and elected official not to raise people's taxes on the whim of the board of selectmen. So as long as advisory feels this is the most advantageous way to finance these things, then I will support to put these questions on the ballot.
Can I clarify something? Ballot questions don't increase taxes. Spending money increases taxes.
These are debt exclusions. They increase taxes.
Yes, because we're spending money. The only way not to increase the taxes is to not spend money. So it's a matter, if you support these are, these spendings, then you're supporting raising taxes. It's not about where the money comes from. It's eventually gonna come from the taxpayers.
Well, actually, it, it is. I'm gonna supplement, I agree with what George said, to supplement slightly, is that another advantage of bonding things is then the residents over twenty years are paying for the use of that asset as opposed to us paying with free cash now when someone moves in five years from now, gets free use of a fire truck for fifteen years or whatever. So by, by having it be in our, uh, our, our long-term debt and then paying it off over time, residents in the future pay their share.
So if I could just respond to both of those.
Okay.
The point is a debt exclusion raises taxes. You can borrow money in the tax levy and within Prop two and a half, and most communities do. The idea that every time we borrow money, it has to increase our taxes, that's a Sherwin idea. It's, doesn't, i- i- it's not a necessary link. Borrowing money within the debt limit doesn't affect the taxes.
That's not true, Paul. If you, you don't, if you spend the whole two and a half percent, which we don't, we haven't for years, our taxes would go up. It would go up dramatically. So.
You don't have to, you don't have to spend.
Just because we're within the limit doesn't mean our taxes aren't gonna go up.
I don't intervene here, because.
The different, uh, if we spend more money, we're, our taxes are gonna go up. It's this very simple concept.
Because you definitely are both right here. I think what Paul's meaning to say is like, it, it potentially goes above the two and a half levy. What you're saying, uh, George, is you need to spend money in order to increase the taxes, and that is of course correct. Sherwin is unique, I will say that. So like, and I know in the town of Framingham, they actually always do capital before they do operating, because they determine what passes in capital, and that capital determines the debt service, and the service gets worked into the operating budget. And here, they don't do that, because every single volume is, is, is technically an exclusion of the Prop, uh, two and a half. Which it's still, we've managed, to George's point, we've managed to still keep it under two and a half while having these, but it is an odd Sherwin thing. And I don't want to, you know, say too much, because we actually had executive session, but you notice that, you know, our new town council didn't even quite understand a little bit himself. He's like, why are you voting on this? Because it is a bit of a unique Sherwin thing. It is. The fact that every single bonded item goes before the town is a two and a half exclusion. We've just been smart enough to still keep it under two and a half. So you're kind of both right in this. It's just a weird thing. It is. My only point of all this is, in an ideal world, we wouldn't make the ballot until, uh, recommended by advisory, but we're not. We're in COVID world with weird deadlines, where some are shifting and some aren't shifting. I still think we just gotta vote for it. It's just not ideal. And we have a recommendation from the chair of advisory, even though they haven't voted on it. Um, but I still think we just need to vote on this, and, um, and, you know, we can push the discussion further if you want, but I think we simply have what we have, and it is what it is, and it's just not ideal in this COVID world. So is there a motion to vote on this?
I'll, I'll vote, I'll make a motion to approve the ballot questions.
All right. Do you have a second? All right. Um, all in favor, Jeff?
Hi.
Uh, Paul?
Based on the recommendation from the chair of advisory, I vote aye.
Okay, uh, George?
Aye.
And I am I as well. On the next item, by the way, uh, discussion before hearings, uh, with the advisory board on Saturday, April tenth. I think we've been having that nonstop through this entire meeting. I don't know if there's anything new that people want to talk about.
Well, I was just gonna add, so we're, it's gonna be a Zoom call, obviously, the advisory public hearing. And it's concurrent meeting. In the past, we sometimes had a select board meeting and an advisory meeting separately, you know, in the auditorium there, cafeteria there, prior to the, having the public hearing. Or in town hall. I don't, do we need to, is there any reason we would need to meet as a, a, a select board? Prior to the start.
Well, I think we should meet during advisory hearing.
Yes.
Comes up with amendment, somebody. Advisory wants to do something different, we may want to vote to agree or disagree or take a position one sort or another.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We always are in a meeting. We're always in session during the hearing.
Yeah, no, I agree with that, Paul, but George, maybe I'm just thinking of town meeting, but sometimes we have a.
Yeah, if there's something that comes up, yeah.
Yeah.
We've had, we've had to have pre meetings before, but I don't think, I mean, unless something comes up between now and then. I don't, I don't see it.
Well, I didn't know if the hunting lane or any of these other things.
Um, I do, I was gonna post the select one for eight AM. When advisory starts at eight thirty.
So that's what I was gonna say. In the past, we've done a half hour ahead of time and frankly, a couple I've been involved with. We just sit there and talk about nothing. So there's really nothing really to talk about. I don't know if, if we want to do that and want to do a half hour early or wait to see something comes up. I believe me as chair, I have the right to set an earlier time if something comes up. Is that right? I'm almost sure I do, right? So.
Yes.
You want us to make it a call to order, just maybe like ten, fifteen minutes before advisory, just so we can call the order or something like that? Or you just want to do the half hour? Makes no difference to me, to be honest. I just, if there's nothing to talk about, like in the past, we just kind of like, you know, just say hi to each other.
The rules require you to post an agenda.
Yes.
So it's not just setting a time and having us sit around and do nothing. You have to actually put down. An agenda item for what we're gonna talk about.
I usually put down preparation for advisory hearings. That kind of covers a lot.
And that's what we've done in the past. Again, just a couple that I've been involved, I'm involved with, like, think like two of these. And it's been exactly that. It's been a half hour ahead of time. And, you know, there's not a whole lot to talk about. I don't mind, but it just, just to be consistent, maybe we continue to do it.
Yes.
Well, advisory used to have a separate meeting posted also for a half hour before.
Sounds good to me.
It sounds like. We'll all be on the same, there we had separate rooms. Here, I'm assuming we'll be on the same Zoom number though, right? So I'll be on the same Zoom and just logistics.
That's why I asked it. If it were really separate meetings, we probably should be in separate.
I don't think advisory usually, at the public hearing, Jeff, they would at town meeting have a early meeting, but I think at the public hearing, there usually is nothing beforehand for.
Okay.
Advisory. Really, it is advisors meeting. We are essentially guests to advisors meeting and we just kind of call it out of a formality.
Okay. Well, we'll let them worry about their meeting however they want.
Exactly.
But we should probably do our pre-meeting on a separate Zoom then, I think. Otherwise, you could have people showing up and if we're really having a select board meeting, I'm not. If that's your intent.
And honestly, it'll probably be commending, it'll probably be discussion, any residual items. That, you know, that have been bought that, you know, people thought of since this meeting, this, and then we'll probably just take a break. That's what I suspect will happen.
Well, I'm fine with however you want to do it.
That brings up a question. Is there, is there any article that we've not voted on whether to support? Or not support that we covered every article on the warrant?
Well, I wondered about the two citizen ones. The one where it was like.
We never voted on those, I don't think.
I don't think we did. It's sales of fur in town and pet. We vote on, I don't, I don't think we voted on those, did we?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I'm looking at it now. It looks like.
I didn't know if they were, if they'd been polled or not. I was even wondering if the.
No, I think they're still on there.
So on, yeah.
Fur and the cats and dogs and rabbit sale, Paul's statement A. But it looks like we did actually vote on the compression brake usage in the town limits. We did vote on that.
We did? What'd we vote?
A four oh.
I didn't vote to support that.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
I think we voted, we voted to put it on the warrant.
Both included, correct, correct.
Because I'd said it's worth a town discussion, but I definitely. Wouldn't support it.
Right now, it's an empty column. Vote to sponsor date. Maybe if David and Diane, you could kind of fill in that column and maybe that is something we talk about on the tent.
We've had the select board do that on the past where there's a late breaking one.
That eight AM, if we could vote on anyone's, just if David and Diane could figure out which ones we haven't voted on to support, we could do a vote that morning on, on the rest of the articles that we haven't done.
That's why I raised the question to see if there was any.
Good point, Paul.
Yep.
We've sometimes had the select board vote in the advisory hearing too, on occasion.
It's better when we can just say whether we voted to support it or not.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Things along faster.
Okay, I think that wraps up at least agenda number seven. Number eight, are there any select board reports?
No.
How about town administrator reports?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Any last comments from the CFO? Finance director, any parting comments?
Where is she?
She probably muted and.
No, I'm all set. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Doug McPherson.
You're welcome.
Thank you again, Sharon. Absolutely.
Thank you, Sharon, for everything you've done for the town.
Oh, you're very welcome. I've enjoyed it.
Enjoy yourself.
Okay, there's nothing further else. I'm actually gonna make a motion to end the open session and to enter executive session. As a motion, as I deemed an executive session warranted for the agenda item as previously read by the town administrator. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call votes required. Jeff?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
I am I as well.